All right, ready?
All set? Okay, great. Okay, good evening, everyone. Just want to take this moment to welcome you to the September meeting of the zoning board of appeals. I just want to take maybe a couple of minutes to explain for those of you who are part of the virtual audience or people who are going to be making presentations to the board tonight, that there's a couple of rules that we follow. Basically, we will ask each of you to present your application. Once you do that, then the board members may ask some questions. And following that, then we would invite anyone from the public who wants to speak regarding this application to do so. Once everyone does that, then we will close the public hearing and move to the next item. Once we've completed all of those, then we will begin the deliberations. You're welcome to listen to the deliberations if you wish. If not, then you would contact Rick DiStefano tomorrow at the building office, and he could let you know what the status of the applications were. Rick, let's then, I guess, begin this meeting by saying, was the meeting properly advertised?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, it was advertised in Brighton's Pittsburgh Post of August 27, 2020.
Okay, could you call the roll?
Ms. Schwartz?
Here.
Ms. Thompson's right?
Yeah.
Ms. Dale?
Here.
Mr. Mites?
Here.
Ms. Schmidt?
She's losing connectivity, she said.
Okay, I see you're here, so. And Ms. Watson?
I'm here. Thank you, Judy.
We've got the record show that Ms. Watson is not present.
Okay, very good. Okay, so Rick, we don't have the minutes from the previous meeting to go over this evening. So at this point, I guess we can begin with the first application.
Application 780420, application Richard Ernie and Carolyn Doutier-Stolz, owner of property located at 60 Helen Road for an area variance from sections 203-2.1B3 and 203-984, allow for the construction of a 960 square foot detached garage in lieu of the maximum 600 square foot detached garage allowed by code. Also, you have an application plans on file. This application was tabled July 1, 2020.
Okay, do we have someone who is speaking regarding this application?
Yes, I am Blake Held.
Yes, good evening, Blake.
Hi.
Okay, so please proceed.
Okay, well, basically, in the package we sent out this time, what we wanted to do was show you the thought process we had as far as trying to locate a garage for this house. And then, so in that package, SK 2.1, shows five different optional locations that we felt would, you know, answer, you know, or just basically, those are the places that we thought would work for locating this garage. One would be the most obvious, you know, location. But we felt that, as I state there, that it would, while it would allow for a short driveway and one that would work off of the original driveway, it caused problems with access to the backyard because of the existing trees elsewhere in the yard for any large equipment, and there are large trees back there that they foresee needing to get equipment back to be able to trim and/or take down trees as they age and get damaged by weather. Also, we felt that it kind of squeezed in between this house and the neighboring house, which is contrary to the character of that neighborhood, which is very open, you know, with the placement of small buildings in large lots. Then, two gets the garage while it would allow for a driveway to reach back to the original driveway. It caused trouble with the trees themselves, those large existing trees. Three was in the wetlands there that would cause significant grading issues, and that would have more significantly impacted the neighbor than any other location. And then four made little sense at all as far as access from driveway or, you know, location as far as views from this house or any other house. So we went back to more or less the first location that we had looked at and wanted to demonstrate that we had considered all these options. So number five, we have pulled the building in as closely as we felt we could to the house. The reason we didn't pull it in closer is that it gets either raised up high above grade and causes other issues of having to dig it in, where would the garage door go, et cetera. So basically, we were left with this being the primary spot for the garage, which is why we had chosen that spot to begin with. You know, not, it wasn't in any attempt to go against what the board was suggesting at all, but we don't see a better option at this point. And that would be our case, basically. We feel like we've tried to work on the garage to make it look appropriate in its character with the house and are looking to develop some sort of a garden courtyard in relation to the connection between this and the house in the way of a pathway to the garage, et cetera, to develop a stronger connection between the two, but without creating some sort of crowding in of the structures. So I guess with that, I'd like to hear questions, if possible.
Okay, do you want to talk a little bit about what you did with the size of the garage also and some of those other factors?
Yes, based on the input that I had from Richard, we were able to shrink the garage, which I think, you know, helped considerably. The garage is smaller. His primary use would be for still the kilns and the like, but we wanted to make sure that the garage would still be able to be functional for a actual garage use in the future.
Okay, how about the design of it or the height and that sort of thing?
Well, you can see from those images that we're looking for a design that matches the character of the house itself, trying to keep it fairly simple with the low slope roof in the front, a more standard gabled roof in the back. Purpose of that is the gable roof is less expensive and more appropriate in building, whereas the low slope roof in the front is, I think, appropriate with the existing house and the character there. And we kept the height down low. We keep the, we're keeping the garage itself in that low land of the property to make sure that it stays low. And those perspective images are to try to give a sense of what the character would be.
Okay, good. Okay, other questions by the board members? Yes, go ahead, Andrew.
Was there, one of concerns was drainage from this garage. Is there any evidence that there's going to be a drainage problem with this size of this garage being built where it is?
We don't believe so, I mean, because the garage is going to be down at that grade level. We don't feel the need at that location to try to raise the garage and have the water slope away from the garage and impact that low land. So that's why we, again, why it's where it is, as opposed to if it were moved into that deeper area there, the low section in the back corner, then the garage would have to be raised up, at which point then water is going to drain into the low lands of the neighboring yard.
Okay. All right, other questions by the board members? Okay, it sounds good.
I'm sorry, this is number, right again. So for the drive aisle, the plan is still to have a one driveway abutting the actual home and then a completely separate driveway onto the garage?
Well, at this point, we don't have a better option to provide.
Let me just add that we denied that variance at our July meeting for a second curb cut. So at this point in time, in order to have access to the garage, which is required under the code is that you have to be able to have automobile access to this structure and be considered a detached garage. They can only use one curb cut at this point in time.
Okay, very good.
So I guess then my question would be, if that's the case, can we have the board review that denial? If they agree with the concept of the garage itself?
Board can review a denied application upon a rehearing. It has to be requested by the applicant, and it would have to be unanimous vote by the board to rehear that application.
Is this the appropriate time to request that?
Not really. You should do that in a letter format to the zoning board. And also, we want to back that up with any additional information so that the board would rehear that and then decide on whether or not they want to rehear the case at their next meeting or just continue with the denial of that second curb cut.
Okay, so the review tonight would be for the garage. If the board were to be favorable towards the concept of the garage, you're saying they still could not approve the garage at this point until a secondary driveway is approved?
No, what I'm saying is that you have one curb cut allowed by code. So you would have to make that detached garage accessible by the curb cut, whether or not you want to move the existing curb cut or add on to the pavement from that curb cut to access the detached garage. There are options for you to do with one curb cut. The second curb cut, which was denied at our July meeting, basically would have that application have to be reheared by this board.
Okay, all right.
For jumping in, this is Richard. I've been listening to your meeting. I wonder, in the accompanying letters of support, one of our neighbors two doors up, who has two curb cuts on their even smaller lot, I believe said they sent a letter in in support of this. And there is another house down the block that has two curb cuts as well. So there is evidence that this does exist and on this street. Thank you.
Okay. All right, is there any other questions? Okay.
Well, if I can, I just want to clarify then that we are seeking approval for a garage. And I guess then what I'm understanding is that how we get to that garage becomes an issue that we know would then have to approach the board for a second time, correct?
Only if, only if you're requesting a second curb cut.
Right, figure a way to work the original.
I mean, you have, you know, the thing is, you have a detached garage, and then you have a driveway that goes into a, probably once was a garage and now has been converted space. Is that driveway actually necessary? You could take that driveway out, put it to the detached garage, and you wouldn't need any approval from this board. But the fact that you're going to add a second one is what requires that approval.
Right.
Okay, understood.
Okay, okay, if there's no other questions at this point, then I'm going to close the public hearing and ask if anyone in the audience or on the Zoom call would like to speak regarding this application? Okay, then, then, excuse me, then, if there are none, then we will close the public hearing at this time. And Rick, we can move to the next application.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I just want to kind of remind the audience that they certainly want to use the raise your hand option in Zoom so that we can certainly
Sure.
make sure that we're seeing who's out there and who might want to speak on a particular application.
No, that's certainly reasonable. Okay.
Okay, application 880720, application party partnership architects agent in George's Family Restaurants, owner of property located at 2171 West Henryetta Road for a variance from section 73-29 in accordance with section 73-34 to allow for the remodeling of a restaurant building without the installation of an automatic sprinkler system as required by code. All described in application plans on file.
Okay. Who do we have speaking on this application? Rick, do you know what it was? It most likely Mr. Fisk?
Yes, it most likely Mr. Fisk.
I'm sorry, can you hear me now?
Yeah, there we go.
I can hear you, Scott.
Okay, my apologies. I'm still learning all of this.
Oh, you know.
I'm here tonight on behalf of John Gere, the owner of 2171 West Henryetta Road, seeking a variance from Brighton's local sprinkler law. And the basis of the variance hearing is, of the request is for the cost of the sprinkler system. Mr. Gere has made, when he acquired the building, his plan was to make improvements to the building, which I think, as you have seen and as we have worked with the town on, have been significant to date. In the process of doing the renovations, he discovered that there was more work necessary than initially thought, got into the project and got to the point where it needed more interior work than was originally planned for. In the process of working with him on that, it brought into play Brighton's local sprinkler law, which we exceeded the threshold of. The issues for us are, it is a small restaurant. It had not been sprinkled, as many restaurants in Brighton are not. But because of the monetary calculations of the sprinkler law, it was pushed into this requirement. I laid out, and I realize it's a very large amount of paperwork, but in essence, we have laid out how, were it not for the local law, this building can be in compliance with all state codes for its use on both the first and second floors by the, by not having an occupant load higher than 100 people. It was never the client's intent to have an occupant load higher than that. There was reference in the fire marshal's response letter to us about an outdoor deck. That was eliminated from the, from any thought early on in the process, just to make the point. I had tried to lay out in the initial application the possible costs of a sprinkler system based on the designs that were given to me by the owners' representatives for and vendors. I then, after receiving the fire marshal's responses, I reviewed those and came back with a second review, which still has a sprinkler system even at its most simplest cost in roughly $70,000. The primary issue here is very low water pressures on West Henryetta Road and the two side streets bordering it. And it is the combination of low water pressure, the expense of bringing in a sufficient sized water service to operate the sprinkler system, and the need for additional equipment, which best practices would state, require a fire pump to boost the water pressure to make the sprinkler system work the way it should. The fire marshal has made valid points. We reviewed those points with both the designer. And I also sought a second opinion through another mechanical and sprinkler company that does a lot of this work in the city. I provided that letter as part of the letter that you should have received this morning or yesterday. In simple terms, it is, the sprinkler system is just such a cost that it is far exceeds what we believe would be the value it would bring in lieu of other things that we plan to do to the building. The construction classification of the building is upgraded to make it more fire resistant. A fire and smoke alarm system would be installed in the building, which is, would help in terms of notification of occupants should something go wrong. The kitchen itself has a hood system, which already has a fire suppression system in it. And we had actually additionally looked at adding a small, limited sprinkler head system in just the kitchen only, if that were to help. At the end of the day, what we are facing is a cost of anywhere from $70,000 to perhaps $140,000 depending upon the final criteria. The initial designs all pointed toward the need for the fire pump. The fire pump may or may not, depending upon the final decision, require a generator, but I've listed the costs for you. The documentation in the original submission provided the basis for how we came to the numbers we came to. In a nutshell, that's really why we are here tonight. I would be happy to answer any questions you might have about it.
Scott, can you tell us roughly what Mr. Gere has invested in the property? Not the purchase of it, but in the construction so far?
He has invested roughly $225,000. He still has a ways to go. He's basically exhausted most of what he's had that he planned to use on this. So he has financing to complete it, but this was not, a sprinkler system of this magnitude or order was not contemplated as part of this.
Okay, all right, so questions by any of the board members, please?
Can I just state something?
Yes.
Before we go into questions, I just want everybody to realize that this application use variance was approved back in May of 2019. And one of the issues was the amount of seating that was required. So at that point in time, I believe it was 64 or 66 seats was the maximum number seats with no upstairs dining. So in order for those type of activities to take place here, they're still going to have to come back to this board for modification to that use variance?
We are planning, just so that you're aware, Rick, at first it was going to be DDS, but apparently it's going to be us coming back to next month's board to expand that non-conformal use.
Use variance, right? Been lost.
Correct.
All right.
So I had a question, is, so is the applicant willing to enforce a occupation load of, I think in the application it said 96 people or less?
Yes, absolutely. Absolutely, there is no reason to have more than that. So the occupant load for the building would be no more than that number. Should be, would be under 100 in any case by state code.
Okay. Other questions, please?
Yes, did I hear something about no second floor? Is that coming up next meeting?
That comes up at the next meeting.
Okay.
Very good. Okay, other questions? I think we had pretty good materials last month and then the clarifications this month, so.
I just want to stress that he is very committed to wanting the restaurant here. The other members of his family operate restaurants elsewhere, I believe it's in Webster. And he had other expanded plans for what he'd like to do. I know that he has neighborhood support, and this is not the appropriate time to bring that up, but other boards have heard that. It's just, this has been, and believe me, I fully appreciate, because it's what I do for a living, life safety sprinklers in general. I did a informal survey of Brighton here yesterday and went to roughly 30 restaurants and took a look at what's, what restaurants had what. And it's all over the place. There are small restaurants that have sprinklers, there are large ones like the Charbroil that have none. So it's less a functional day-to-day issue and more of a code and a compliance issue. So in this particular case, I really think that we made the case that without the sprinklers, he still provides a facility that's equally as good as any other in Brighton and probably better because of what we're doing.
Okay, Scott, thank you very much. Okay, if there are no other questions from the board members, then are there any folks in the audience that would like to speak regarding this application? If you want to raise your hand, if you're out there to do that, then you have the opportunity. Okay, at this point, it looks like there aren't. So at this point, we'll close the public hearing and move to the next application. Thank you, Scott.
Thank you, Dennis. Thank you, board members.
I will read the next two applications, they're for the same property. Application of Pastoral, application 980120, application Pastoral Associates Agent in New Monroe Real Estate, owner of property located at 2816 Monroe Avenue for area variance from section 205, there's 16A to 1. Allow for parallel parking stalls to be eight feet wide, move them in a nine feet as required by code. And two, allow a one-way drive aisle to be 12 feet wide, move them in a minimum 15 feet wide as required by code. All described in application plans on file. And application 980220, application Pastoral Associates Agent in Monroe State, excuse me, New Monroe Real Estate, owner of property located at 2816 Monroe Avenue for one. An area variance from sections 205-18B to allow paving and parking up to a lot line and move having a 10-foot setback as required by code. And two, an area variance in section 205-7 to allow impervious lot coverage to increase from 73% to 77% or a maximum 65% as allowed by code. All described in application plans on file.
Okay, so who do we have from Pastoral this evening?
David Cox with Pastoral Associates is here.
Okay, David, just give us your address, please.
Pastoral Associates is 242 West Main Street, Rochester, New York.
Okay, please proceed.
So Pittsburgh Animal Hospital has been experiencing growth and also a change in how they do animal care. That animal care has really advanced recently in the recent years to have more higher demand for advanced medical services. So a lot more surgical procedures, x-rays, diagnostic imaging, pharmacy, dental care, nutritional counseling, all things that, you know, you know, 10 or 15 years ago, you know, veterinary hospitals were not really providing those services. But with increasing technology, they are now providing these. They, I mean, they are literally hospitals for animals. They're, you know, all the same equipment that's in a regular hospital, they have. So what that does create, though, is the need for more specialized staff. Just like at a regular hospital, you know, not everyone can do diagnostic imaging. Not everyone can do x-ray, you know, pharmacy, dental. So they need to bring in more specialty staff. So that's really what's driving the need for additional parking is for this specialized staff. So what the plan is, right now, there's parking in the front of the building off of Monroe Ave. That's staying exactly how it is today. And then there's a one-way drive aisle that goes along the east side of the building. And then it kind of loops into the parking lot area. And then in that back area, parking lot area, you would exit out onto Clover to get out. So what we're doing is just revising that that one-way drive aisle that gets to the back parking lot. We're revising that to have parallel parking on the right hand or the east hand side of the property. So we're able to provide 11 handicap, or sorry, parallel parking spaces in there. And part of the reason for two of the variances are the town of Brighton Co. doesn't really address parallel parking spaces. So it just, the code just references the typical, you know, 9 by 18, where parallel parking spaces are actually of a different size. The industry standard for parallel parking is actually eight feet wide and 22 feet long. So that's what we are proposing here is an industry standard, but just that doesn't meet the, you know, the typical, you know, 9 by 18 that would be for, you know, perpendicular parking. And then the other part of that is the town code doesn't also, it doesn't address, you know, how big the drive aisle should be for parallel parking. There is a reference in the code about requiring 15 feet for one-way traffic. But then again, it doesn't really address the parallel parking. Other parts of the code, it does say for a fifth, for a 45-degree parking, you're allowed to have a 12-foot drive aisle. So there's, you know, a 12-foot drive aisle you can have for 45-degree parking, but it just, it doesn't address parallel parking. So, um, so since it's not addressed, we do need the variance to have that 12-foot drive aisle for the parallel parking. And then on the other ones is, you know, since we are putting that parallel parking in, it does, we do need a little more pavement there. So we are having parking that is pretty right on the property line. So we are requesting that zero-foot parking setback off that east. So we are requesting that zero-foot parking setback off that eastern property line. And then that last variance for the lot coverage, I actually made a mistake in my application, my submit, or I said 77. And I confirmed it just before this meeting that it actually is 82% coverage. So that is a mistake on my part, but like to just point that out. And one of the other things we did, if we looked at, you know, as far as coverage and impervious coverage, you know, what are the existing properties around, you know, us? So we did a coverage map of the, kind of the area. And what we found out is the majority of properties around us actually have a higher coverage than we are proposing of 82. A lot of them had a, in the 90s, 94, 92% coverage. So the, let me just pull it up so I don't give you wrong numbers. Give me one second. So Metro Tire on the corner there has 96% lot coverage. The bank, which is just to the east of us, has 93% lot coverage. And then directly across the street, where the hotel is, is 97%. Just to the west of that is 94%. Just to the west of that is 91%. So we're not out of character with the neighborhood. And, you know, it is a very dense commercial corridor that typically has higher lot coverages. What we are doing is, you know, we're trying to add as much landscaping as we can to the property. So we're adding additional trees and shrubs at the entrance along Clover or along Monroe Ave. And then we're also adding some shrubs and landscaping in between that drive aisle and the existing parking lot. So, and then we're putting some additional trees along Clover Street. So we're really, we're trying to add in more landscaping, more shrubs to help more beautify the area and provide as much landscaping as we can. I think that's all I have.
Okay. Can you just briefly, did you look at any other possible ways to create, you know, the relief as relates to the parking on the site? Was this the only option? Could you talk about what else you might have considered, please?
Sure. So the owner of the property did reach out to the owners of Whole Foods to the west, and they were not able to secure any parking agreements with that development. And they also reached out to the bank to the east if they could, you know, rent any parking from them. And they, the bank denied that request and was not willing to rent any parking spaces to the animal hospital.
Okay. Okay. Appreciate that you guys investigated that as an option. Okay, is there any other questions by the board members, please, or questions?
Yes, I wanted to ask you, in application number one, you said that this new parking will be for the staff. Do they arrive before patients come? And then will those spaces then automatically be filled before patients come? And/or will you mark those spaces for employees only? Or how are you going to keep that safe and filled, you know, where there won't be traffic in and out during the day?
Right, so the staff arrive before the patients or the customers do. So they, all those spaces will be filled prior to customers coming.
And they won't be marked? They'll just be filled?
Yeah, they'll just be filled.
Okay.
Okay, other questions by the board members?
This member, right, is there any concern with having sort of that narrow drive aisle back to the back of the building for emergency vehicles?
It is, it is wide enough for emergency vehicles to get through. It's the same, you know, similar width that it is nowadays, except, you know, under existing conditions, there's kind of a sharp left-hand turn. Now we kind of have a straight shot for emergency vehicles, so I don't see that as an issue at all.
All right, other questions? Okay. At this point, then, I would like to ask if there's anyone in the Zoom audience that would like to speak regarding this application, either 9801 or 9802. Okay, there being none?
There is one.
Oh, there is one, okay. I'm sorry, go right ahead. Takes a little bit here, so.
I see I was muted, I'm sorry. Good evening, my name is Jacob Zoglin. I represent Brighton Grassroots, which is an LLC whose members include Brighton residents who live near the applicant's property as well as the proposed Whole Foods Plaza. Brighton Grassroots has appeared before the Town of Brighton Town Board and Planning Board to comment on proposed projects that may have detrimental impacts on traffic, that may violate the town code and other applicable laws, and that may harm its members. Today I offer comments on New Monroe Real Estate's application that relate to our traffic concerns. First, because this parcel is adjacent to the site of the proposed Whole Foods Plaza, it raises questions about whether they will be connected in any way. This is an important question because in considering the applications related to the Whole Foods Plaza, traffic, internal circulation, and other access management issues were of the utmost concern. Accordingly, I asked the ZBA to inquire from the applicant as to whether the applicant intends to connect its parcel to the Whole Foods Plaza development or in any way allow access from the applicant's parcel directly onto the site of the adjacent Whole Foods Plaza. Similarly, in reviewing the applications, I see that Passero Associates' existing conditions and demolition plan for the project, which is located on page 16 of the application, references a gate to remain locked on the north side of the property. And if you're looking at the map, that's the top left side of the map. Given that this stretch of Monroe Avenue has some of the worst traffic around, traffic issues and internal circulations are extremely concerning to Brighton Grassroots's members. Accordingly, I respectfully ask that the ZBA seek clarification from the applicant regarding this gate and more specifically, the conditions under which the gate would ever be unlocked and open to allow any kind of vehicular access from this parcel to the Whole Foods Plaza property. And finally, the same page of the application on the bottom-left side of the plans along Monroe Avenue, which is the western portion of the parcel, shows a row of bushes separating this parcel from the proposed Whole Foods Plaza, part of the landscaping that Mr. Cox referenced earlier. There appears to be a break in the row of bushes close to where the edge of the parcel meets Monroe Avenue. And our concern is that this opening between the bushes and Monroe Avenue may allow vehicles to cross from this parcel to the proposed Whole Foods Plaza at this location as well, which could impact traffic, internal circulation, and other internal access management issues. And so finally, I respectfully ask the ZBA to seek clarification from the applicant regarding whether vehicular access is anticipated between the applicant's parcel and the Whole Foods Plaza to the west, specifically along the area between the applicant's building and Monroe Avenue where there is that break in the bushes. Thank you for your time and the opportunity to address the board.
Okay, Mr. Zoglin, thank you. Okay.
I can address that.
Excuse me?
I can address that if you would like.
Yeah, if you have knowledge of any arrangements or lack of arrangements, then I think, you know, normally we don't have a little interrogatory type discussion like this, but if you can add a clarification, then that would be helpful.
Absolutely. So there is absolutely no plans to have any interconnected vehicular traffic between the Whole Foods Plaza and this property. In fact, after we had the planning board meeting, we told the planning board that we are actually going to put a new fence along the property line that borders the Whole Foods property that will continue along the whole western property line, and there will be no gate. So there will be no way for vehicles to enter the property at all. So that will be completely blocked off. And then on the Monroe Ave, we are planning, as he mentioned, there is a little break in the shrubs. So we are planting a tree in that opening, and that should prevent any vehicles from wanting to make it through there. So there is absolutely no plan for vehicular traffic, and we are doing everything to block off any possibility of traffic coming onto this property.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Cox. Was there anyone else that wanted to speak regarding this application?
Yes, we do have Howie Jacobson who would like to speak.
Okay.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Oh, okay, thank you. I was glad to hear there would be no gate.
Could you just state your name and address for the record, please?
Howie Jacobson, Penn Sandringham, Rochester, New York, in Brighton.
Okay, go right ahead.
I am very glad to hear that there would be no gate because based on pending issues with the lawsuits on the proposed oversized Whole Foods Plaza, we would hate to see any access to Clover Street. So I'm very glad to hear that Pastoral has addressed that issue. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you for your comments. Okay, is there anyone else that would like to make a comment regarding this application? Okay, there being none, then this public hearing is closed. And Rick, we can move to the next application.
Application 980320. Application of RFM Morgan Properties, owner of property located at 2125 Monroe Avenue for an area variance with section 205-12, allowing for the demolition of two carports, leaving the property with no covered parking spaces where 40 covered parking spaces are required by code. All described in application plans on file.
Okay. Who do we have speaking on this?
David Cox with Pastoral Associates.
Okay, David, we got your address, so go right ahead.
Is there any way for me to share my screen?
I think we have it.
Well, we got it up, but we can't show the screen, Dave.
Okay, all right. Because I just, I had some pictures of the existing garages, but that's okay. So I can just describe. So the garages are in rough shape. Structurally, they're in pretty rough shape. And as well is, they've become kind of like a dumping grounds for just unwanted things. You know, that there's, you know, a pile of like an old stereo stack. There's just kind of like old tires, like, and there's just, there's all this garbage piled up in these garages, because it's just open. It's an open garage that the user or the owner's not too happy about. And he thinks that, you know, just getting rid of the garages would really, and just have service parking would really clean up the site and make it look more appealing. And that all the units do have storage inside the building. He would like them to store their things inside the building and not in the garage. So there's the safety hazard and also an aesthetic issue as well. So we're proposing to clean that up. And as part of this, we can actually get a few more parking spaces on-site, which gets it closer to what code requires. So we're seeing this as a win for the project and for the people who live here. And I can take any questions.
Yeah, David, have you offered, or can you offer any other mitigation just for the installation of this from the visual perspective?
Yeah, so in the, to the south, along New Crest Drive, there is an existing wood fence barrier. And there's quite a bit of landscaping and trees there. If some additional landscaping were to be required, then the owner is willing to do that.
Is there, you know, again, I drove back there and it's a little harder to look all the way along that fence, because there's a couple types of fence there. But is the fence in adequate condition? Or is if it was any disrepair, the owner would be willing to correct it?
Yep, so we did get one comment that a limb did fall on a part of the fence. So that is scheduled to be repaired. So that's the only part of the fence that's in, you know, that needs repair. And that is on the books for the owner to take care of that. The rest of the fence is in good order.
Okay. All right, questions by the rest of the board, please?
Yes, I did drive through twice and I found many cars parked in their little spots. I did notice that there was one in particular who had a grill and it looked like some sort of a raft that would be for summer sports. I can appreciate why someone would want to keep a grill there because it's just easy to pull out rather than going to a storage area and bringing it out. But to be honest, I found those that were empty without a car there to be very neat. There wasn't anything in them. I have other comments that, you know, would come up during our discussion, but I didn't find them to be quite as they were described in the application. So whether they were cleaned up, I don't know, but they were really in nice order.
Good. All right, are there other questions that the board members have related to? Go ahead, Rick.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I just want to make a comment about the possible need for screening back there, Dave. A lot of that vegetation is deciduous. So I think during the winter months, which unfortunately we have a lot of around here, we could really be lacking in the proper screening, especially from all the additional headlights that could be pointing towards New Crest. So I think that's going to be an important aspect. I think the planning board also discussed with you the need for a better screen back there. We do appreciate the fact the fence is there and that fence is going to be maintained. However, I think you do need additional screening, landscaping there to help with headlights.
And the owner is willing to do that. I did speak to him about that, so that is, he can do that.
Do you have any specifics related to that? Because, again, it's a pretty broad topic, as you know.
Right.
Dennis, I think what this board, if we decide that we're going to move forward with this variance request, I think one thing that we could do is suggest that the applicant, they're still in front of the planning board for site plan modifications, so we certainly could suggest that we allow the planning board to determine the required.
Medigation, okay. Yep, that's fine. Okay, we can discuss that further. I just didn't know if David had anything specific in mind, that was the point of the question. Okay, all right, that's fine. Okay, other questions by the board members? Okay, very good. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak regarding this application? Okay, appears to be none. So at this point, then the public hearing is closed. Thanks to you, David.
Thank you very much.
Application 980420. Application of Save Monroe Avenue Incorporated. Appealing the issuance of a building permit by the Town of Brighton Building Inspector to the Daniele Family Companies, developer of the Whole Foods project located at 2740, 2750 Monroe Ave. All described in application plans on file.
All righty.
Jeff, could you let Charles Malcolm in?
Yep.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Aaron Sakin. I'm an attorney at the law firm of Hodgson Russ. We are the lawyers for Save Monroe Avenue and the other appellants in this appeal. I want to thank you for your time tonight. And I just wanted to begin by pointing out the role of the ZBA, obviously, in a situation where somebody is challenging a determination of the associate planner or the building inspector. And in this case, it's to review the determination that's been made to issue a building permit anew. You know, that is for the first time. So essentially, the members of the board are standing in the shoes of the building inspector, just as he did when he was reviewing the application. And you independently go through everything to make sure that all of the steps were followed. And obviously, in this case, they weren't. Before I get into some of the specific reasons that are laid out in both our appeal and the supplemental materials that we submitted to the board, I kind of want to... that we submitted to the board, I kind of want to zoom out a little to ten thousand feet here. So the members of the board understand the context first in which this building permit was issued. It was done entirely in secret. And here's what I mean by that. We had asked the town and its attorney on multiple occasions whether a building permit had been issued. They ignored all of our outreach and all of our attempts to obtain that information. We had to literally get on the phone with the court and with Judge Ark on the phone, ask if the permit had been issued. And then Judge Ark pointedly asked the attorney for the town, has a building permit been issued? And then reluctantly, the town attorney said, yes, a building permit for this project has been issued. That wasn't all of the secrecy. It continued. We had made requests and had submitted a freedom of information request for some of the documentation, not some, all the documentation supporting the issuance of the building permit. The town repeatedly delayed in issuing or in responding and in providing us the documents that we requested, which are public documents. We had to go to court again to ask the judge to provide us the documents so we could evaluate whether the developer complied with the law and the town complied with the law in issuing the building permit. So we went to court and the court had to order the town to provide us with the documents. So that's the context in which we even got to this point, that everything was done quietly and secretly, hoping that some of the project opponents wouldn't find out. And now we have, having gone through the documents, we have a better idea about why this is done so quietly. So I want to talk about some of the bases here. There are multiple. Why this board, again, reviewing this anew for the first time, should annul the determination to issue the permit. The first one is a very simple one, which is the developer failed to provide all of the required cross access easements for the access management plan. And that was required under the incentive zoning approval. There's at least three cross easements that are not valid. There's two for the Mama San's properties and one for the SNA hospitality property. These easements lack the signatures and approval of the first mortgage holder. The terms of the mortgage require that these people approve the easements. So in other words, those easements that the developer provided to the town aren't worth the paper they're printed on. They're invalid as a matter of law. And under the town code, the associate planner and building inspector, who makes the determination to issue the building permit, has to confirm that the applicant complied with the law. And I think you should ask the building inspector, did he check and make sure all of those easements were valid? Did he check and make sure there weren't other people with property interest, recorded interests, as these mortgages are, who would have to grant permission for those easements? I can tell you that never happened because they wouldn't have issued the permit if that was the case. As I mentioned, these were required under the incentive zoning approval. They were part of the amenity agreement. The town code requires the associate planner to confirm that the developer is complying with the town zoning code, but the associate planner never did that here. The developer is not in compliance. He's not in compliance with the town code. He's not in compliance with the incentive zoning provisions of the town code because they haven't met the conditions for a particular amenity. Second example, we have been provided with no proof that the developer has provided the eight hundred sixty-seven thousand dollar letter of credit for the access management plan. The reason we say that is this. Remember, I mentioned at the beginning of the presentation that the court ordered the town to turn over to us all of the documents that the town and the building inspector relied on when they were issuing the permit. There was no letter of credit for the access management plan included in there. That's critical because that also is a condition of approval to issue the building permit under the incentive zoning approval. It can't issue the building permit without providing that letter of credit. So one of two things either happened here. Either they did not provide that, and I hope the board does its due diligence to confirm and check on that. That's one. Or number two, they did provide it and the town never turned it over to us in violation of the court order, which is a separate issue that we can deal with, but I wanted to make the board aware of that. The third example is also a very simple and straightforward one. This is a building permit only for the Starbucks building, which means that the associate planner, in approving this building permit and approving the construction of one building, is allowing phased construction here. Phased construction is prohibited. This is violating SEAKER and it's violating the plane requirements of the incentive zoning approval. It has to be constructed in a single phase. If you go back to the first form that the developer submitted to the town, the EAF Form One, the developer checked the box for single-phase construction. And then because the developer did that, they didn't have to go and answer all those other questions that have to be explored under SEAKER when you do a multi-phase construction. Not only that, the draft environmental impact statement and the SEAKER findings from the town board reviewed only a single-phase construction project and required a single phase when they were addressing mitigation for the construction impacts. The incentive zoning approval expressly requires single-phase construction. By issuing a building permit for one of these buildings, one at a time, what they've done is they've now allowed multi-phase construction. The associate planner was required, was required to confirm that the applicant for the building permit was complying with all the requirements for the, for the permit. Submitting an application and receiving a permit for a single building on site allows multi-phase construction, which is prohibited. In this case, the associate planner failed to comply with the town code and confirm that the developer complied with all the requirements. So it's our position, and I think it's very clearly spelled out here, that the issuance of the building permit for the Starbucks building at the Whole Foods site needs to be annulled. There's no way this issuance of the permit can stand on the record. And we certainly hope the ZBA is methodical in going through these and recognizes the fact that this application was deficient for the reasons we've set forward before. And with that, I am willing to answer any questions on behalf of the applicant.
Chairman, if I could just make a statement for the record. Yeah, I just wanted to know that the applicant amended their application, submitted additional material well past the application cutoff date for this meeting. I suggest we receive and file that material tonight, and I will distribute it to the members prior to our next meeting.
Okay.
If, may I just add, I appreciate you considering that and distributing it. And I know you're sincere in that. But I, I think I need to point out the reason why we had to submit some of that stuff later. The reason was we couldn't even get the doc. And I'm sorry, I sound a little frustrated here, but it's frustrating. We couldn't get the documents or the records from the town to review to determine if the law had been complied with. And so when we submitted our application, we reserved our right to supplement it later on. And as soon as we were able to go through those documents, and there were thousands of pages, we, we sent a submission to the board a couple of weeks ago as quickly as we could. So I just wanted to give that context. And I wanted to thank the members of the board and Mr. DiStefano for accepting those materials and considering that as part of our submission.
Okay, yes. And I, and I think, you know, it echoes also, you know, the comments that you've made in your presentation that, you know, it is our, this board's responsibility to review those materials, all the materials and the comments that you've made so that we can make a proper determination here. So I think you can rest assured that we'll be doing that. Are there other questions that the board members have for Mr. Sakin at this point? Okay, well then, at this point, then, I will ask if there's anyone in the audience that would like to speak regarding this application. I believe we have a Mr. Zaglin.
Good evening again. As I mentioned earlier in this evening, my name is Jacob Zaglin and I represent Brighton Grassroots. Brighton Grassroots has also filed an appeal with respect to the building inspector's issuance of this building permit. And we expect that appeal to be heard by the ZBA at its next meeting. As more fully set forth in our appeal, we believe that this building permit was issued in violation of law and violation of the town code. We look forward to the opportunity to address these issues in more detail when the ZBA considers our appeal. Again, thank you very much for your time and the opportunity to address the board this evening.
Okay, Jacob, thank you. Appreciate it. Is there anyone else that would like to speak regarding this application? Okay, there being, oh, yep, go ahead, Mr. Jacobson. Go right ahead.
Thank you. It's Howie Jacobson in Sandringham. I just want to make. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, I just want to make a note that.
No, we can't hear him.
Lost you. Howie, we've lost you.
Lost him.
Yeah, well, no, no audio, right?
Oh, he's muted. He's muted.
Yeah, I see it.
He just got muted. Jeff, can you try unmuteing him? Yes.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I just, you can hear me, right?
Yes.
Now we can.
I just want to, no, I just want to make a note as a resident of Brighton that right now at eight o'clock until tomorrow morning, any of us can drive behind Mama San's, we could drive, walk or bike right onto the construction site where there's demolition and construction. There is no fencing, no blockage to get on this site. The, the building permit must have some restrictions to allow people to protect this site from people simply walking on this site. There's no fencing, no restricted way that they have done to block this site from the safety of our residents. So the demolition of Mama San's has no fencing around it. And this, this site that you've given building permit to, you could go right over there right now and walk around and God forbid, someone in our town takes a walk or drives a car over there. We could have a major lawsuit. Why you are allowing that to happen is mind-boggling. So that's my, my story.
All right, I appreciate the comment and we can certainly take it under the correct auspices.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome. Is there any other folks that are interested in speaking regarding this application? Okay, it looks like there are none. So at this point, then we'll close the public hearing and move on to the next application. Thank you.
Application nine A oh five twenty, application George E. Base, owner of property located at eighty-two Fairhaven Road for an area variance with section two oh seven dash eleven A to a portion of an in-ground swimming pool to be constructed in a side yard. We're not allowed by code. All subvention application plans on file.
Okay, and who do we have to speak regarding this application?
This is George Base at eighty-two Fairhaven Road.
Okay, George, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members for considering our application. And I apologize for the rendering compared to the professional ones before. I'm, I'm a humble homeowner putting in for this variance prior to the actual building application. In short, we'd like to build an in-ground pool in our side yard. The dimensions will be either eighteen by thirty-six or twenty by forty. The reason for the variance is we have a very large tree and a barbecue in the back of the lot. Without the variance, both the tree and the barbecue will need to be removed, as well as the edge of the eastern end of the pool will be very close to the fence, the safety fence, what it, once it is set off ten feet from the property line, allowing very little patio. I noted in my application that regarding the overall neighborhood and the aesthetics, the fence, the front fence, we're not planning on changing regardless of where the pool ends up. That would be because if the pool gets pushed to the back of the lot, we won't have any patio back there. So the majority of the patio will be up front. The front fence will be a few feet behind the front edge of the house and it will be eventually finished with, with a wooden privacy fence that extends ten to fifteen feet back on the sides. And so we are asking for a variance that allows the edge, the front edge or the western edge of the pool to be moved up twenty feet from the back edge of the house.
So maybe you could help us a little here too and suggest, you know, what, what if any other alternatives you looked at here to try to come closer to the code?
So I, I looked at switching the orientation of the pool. And because of the, the requirement for ten feet from the property lines, I can't put it the other direction. It, it won't fit. Going ten feet from my property line, the other direction. I, you know, I, we could shrink the pool, but we've been looking forward to, you know, something in this size range. And it's, it's, it's a good sized pool. I, I mentioned to Rick that I, I don't think we'll use all twenty feet, but to be pushed back. So basically, in that rendering, the back part of the house goes directly, basically dissects the pool. So if you can imagine pushing the pool back that whole direction, and I showed members of the board that stopped out and took a look, it pushes it back almost at the edge of the lot. So there's no, that there's going to be three to five feet in the back from the safety fence, which is, you know, not much room. I, I don't know why that my, I showed people that the lot behind my house really is kind of small and triangular. So it doesn't, it, it wouldn't accommodate. Once you start putting a ten-foot fence, you know, moving ten feet off the property line kind of limits where things will fit.
Okay, very good. All right. So board members, questions for Mr. Base?
This is member Wright. Will there be a variance request for the fence as well, or is that considered the rear yard, in which case it can be higher than three and a half feet?
I, I'm, is, from what I understood, and this was from a conversation with Rick, as long as it was behind the front edge of the house, it, it would be fine. And you know, it needs to be at least four feet. It will probably, if it's, if it's okay, and the plans will be submitted by the gentleman doing the construction, it will probably be about six feet.
Yeah, because that fence would be located entirely within the side and rear yards, it can be up to six and a half feet in height.
And I have also, the, the main neighbor that would be affected would be the, the neighbor to the south of us. And I, I mentioned in the application, I spoke with both of them. And they, they have no issue with, you know, issuing the variance.
And then just another question. I, I drove in the neighborhood. I didn't see any other pools in the side yard, but are there other pools in this area? Or are there other homes in this area that have pools in their side yard that are not fully or at least mostly in the backyard of the home?
There, there is no other in-ground pool on my street. There is a above-ground pool across the street, several doors down. And that is actually, it's, it's like a side backyard, but it is technically in their backyard.
Okay. All right, other questions for Mr. Base? Okay.
Thank you.
Good, sorry.
Thank you.
Okay, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak regarding application nine A oh five? Okay.
So Kathy just sent a note asking to be unmuted.
I saw it. Okay. I don't know if Jeff's there or who are we? Rick?
Okay, can I ask a question?
Yes, please.
Please?
Yes.
Do you plan on adding? Are you planning adding any?
The audio is just not.
Can she type the question?
Kathy, can you please type the question?
Is there anything you can do with this, Rick or Jeff, or no?
Not if she's going out like that. She can hear us. If she could type the question, then we can ask it.
Yeah, because we better keep ourselves moving here.
Jeff, can you unmute Kathy again and see if she's? Jeff, can you unmute Kathy again and see if she's?
It says unmuted. Can you hear me now?
Yes, please go ahead Kathy. There's obviously some kind of failure, Rick, on her device probably.
It was, I just wanted to ask the homeowner if they were planning on adding?
Oh, no.
Anything, any landscaping?
And do you plan on adding any landscaping around the front portion of the fence?
Yes, yes. So, so the first phase will be switching, uh, so we'll be switching the front portion of the fence. And I think I mentioned that will continue ten to fifteen feet back into a wooden privacy fence. But then there, there will be various trees and bushes and, and both, on both sides of the fence, to be honest with you, but on the, yeah, on the street side, for sure, there, there'll be both trees and bushes.
Okay. So you have not developed a specific plan at this point, but you're offering some mitigation for the fence?
Yes. And, and, and there are, there are houses on the street that have fences that go where this fence will be located. There are just no, uh, there are just no houses. I, I have an unusual lot in that I have a full-size double lot. So it's, it.
Okay. All right. That's good. All right. Thank you. Now, go ahead. Is there anyone else on the board that has any other comments? Okay. If not, then, um, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak regarding this application? Okay. It looks like there being none, then the public hearing is closed. Thank you, Mr. Base. Okay, Rick.
Application nine A O six twenty, application Julie Ann Bromberg, owner of property located at two twenty-six Norman Road for an area variance in section two O five dash two, allowing addition to extend two feet into the nine-foot side setback required by code. All is clear in the application and plans on file.
Okay. And who do we have to speak regarding Norman Road?
You're still muted.
There we go. Now everybody can hear. Uh, I'm Julie's husband, Jared Bromberg. I also live in the property. So I'll be, I'll be speaking. She is obviously over my shoulder. Uh, good evening. So what we're looking to do, we just had a baby girl who's eight weeks old tomorrow. So what we're looking to do is kick out the house from that wall with a, and out twelve feet. We'll be going into our setback by I think two to two and a half feet. And then we're going to go back to build a two-car garage so the cars could fit, kind of like nose the back. And then upstairs, there'll be two bedrooms and a bath for the kids to share.
All right. So could you just tell us if you looked at any other alternatives to handling this? Or was this the only remotely possible way to handle it?
Yeah. Um, we are, I don't know if there's any other pictures there. I took some pictures that when we were before the architectural review board. But we are, there's shrubs and trees along the property line on the other side of the house. And along the back of the house, our setback tank is there. So we can't go back anywhere. So the only option is to go off to the side that's noted on the, uh, on the, uh, on the survey map.
Okay. Would you suggest that this is kind of the minimum size that would accomplish what you're trying to achieve here?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Board members, questions?
Jared, have you received architecture review board approval at this point in time?
No, not yet. The architectural review board wants us, they want to be certain, even though we've, the contractor was on the call with the architectural review board. And we assured them that the siding, the new siding and the existing siding will match. They wanted assurances that the new garage door, because part of this is building a, a second garage next to the existing one. They want to make sure that the garage doors also match. And they wanted us, they wanted the addition of, there we go. And they wanted the addition of some windows along that side of the house that faced the neighbors. So we're working with the architect and with the contractor to tinker with the drawings and we go before the architectural review board on the twenty-second of September.
Okay. So if I understand this properly, you're going to have the, the existing garage, it's going to remain a garage?
Yes.
So you're not going to remodel that space?
No, that's going to stay exactly as is.
And then, then you're, then you're adding another basically two, two-car garage to that.
Yeah. The existing garage we use for, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off. The existing garage we use now for, uh, it's basically storage. So building, building a garage next to that one so we could fit my car and my wife's car. And then above bedrooms and, uh, for the, for the, for our two kittens.
I just want to verify that the total garage space will not be larger than nine hundred square feet?
Uh, I'd have to look at the drawings and could talk to the architect about that. I'm not, I don't know if I can answer that question.
All right. I, I don't think it will be, but I just want you to realize that if it is greater than nine hundred square feet for the combined, I'll call it three-car garage now, that would require an additional variance from this board.
Okay.
So maybe, I, I don't know what you might want to do, but just keep that in mind, please.
Okay, of course.
All right. Very good, Rick. Okay. Does anyone else on the board have questions for Mr. Bromberg?
Yeah, member Wright. Looks from the survey that the neighboring house is eight feet from the house. So that would make basically at finished construction, there'll be about fifteen feet in between the homes. Okay.
The neighboring home on, on the side where we're building, the, the side where we're building the, uh, we're building the proposed addition is, uh, our neighbors on that side of the house, they're exactly at the, at the, at the footage that they need before their setback. So I don't know if you could pull up the, so we're the survey map and I don't know if it's a hundred percent accurate right now. But, uh, there might be, I don't know if there's actual pictures included there that was with the other board, but, uh, where our, where our shed, the shed where it juts out, ten point eight in the back, that shed is now off to the side of the house and it's not attached anymore. There's, there was a picture that we had for the architectural review board. But basically the house is going to stop at that point is where it's going to come up to. To give like a visual of where the house is going to end and where the neighbor's house begins.
Okay. Very good. All right. Any other questions for Mr. Bromberg? Okay. Then at this point then, or is there anyone in the audience?
I, I, I apologize. And you may have said this and I'm sorry if I missed it, but did you have a conversation with that neighbor?
Oh, yes. We had a, we had a conversation with that neighbor. Uh, we did not submit anything in writing. In retrospect, we probably should have, but, um, that we've spoken with that neighbor and she has absolutely no issues with the proposed addition.
Okay. Sorry about that.
Not so good. That's not your fault. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. So is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak regarding this application? Okay. Appears to be none. Then at this point, the public hearing is closed.
Okay. Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you very much.
Application nine A O seven twenty, application Jason and Kara Acker, owners of property located at one eighteen Commodore Parkway for an area variance in section two O nine dash ten E two, allow front yard pavement coverage to be thirty-two point six percent after expansion of the driveway and moving to maximum thirty percent allowed by code. All is clear in the application and plans on file.
Okay. Commodore Parkway, who do we have speaking for us?
Uh, good evening. This is Jason Acker, the property owner.
Okay, Jason, just the address for the record, please?
One eighteen Commodore Parkway.
Okay, please proceed.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Thank you for your time this evening. To describe the application, uh, my wife and I bought our house back in two thousand thirteen. The driveway of our house, as you can see in the plans, is, is one that is basically two-car widths wide up near the house and then it narrows down, uh, about halfway down as you get closer to the street. And, uh, it's basically set up to where, you know, we can park two cars up near the house. But then if there's a third car parked behind it, um, you know, only that vehicle in the back is able to get out on the driveway. So the, uh, the driveway had pretty substantial wear and tear to it. So we inquired of some local contractors about repairing it and we were told that the only option was to do sort of a full demolition, tear out and, uh, re, and, you know, complete redo of the driveway. So when we were told that, that's when we thought about the idea of making it a uniform width all the way down for reasons of convenience. Um, you know, we, we have two young children, so we do have grandparents and family that is at the house from time to time to visit. So it does create inconvenience at times when, um, you know, when a third vehicle is, uh, is parked there and it limits the ability to access the street. So we, uh, we hired a contractor to do that. They came out and they, they did the first phase of demolishing the old driveway, laying down the, uh, the gravel and the stone and all that to let it settle to eventually pave it. I'm sorry, I should say before that, that before the contractor commenced with the job, I inquired, you know, if we needed to obtain any permits or anything like that. And they assured me, you know, no, don't worry about it. We take care of all that. So in the interim of when we were waiting to, you know, for, for the contractor to come back and finish the paving, we received a letter from the town telling us that we didn't have the proper permit for the driveway expansion. And when I questioned the contractor as to what happened, they said that they thought we were in the town of Penfield and not Brighton, which is why they didn't apply for any permits. Yeah. While we are close to Penfield, we are definitely in Brighton. So, um, obviously we were, we were in violation there. So of course we, uh, we stopped any further work and, um, you know, through, through the contractor, we were, we were told about the law requiring no more than thirty percent, um, front yard coverage of paving, um, which was not something we were aware of, you know, when we commenced with the project. I did walk around our Ellison Park Heights neighborhood and I found a number of properties that have a driveway that's, that's two cars wide. Um, I counted, I think eighteen of them without even, um, without even going down the longest kind of offshoot of our cul-de-sac. And I found a number of properties that have, uh, that would, that have a layout similar to what we're looking for with the two-car width driveway, um, the paved walkway leading up to the, uh, the concrete stoop. And I attached, I think, four or five, um, Google Maps photos of those properties for reference. All of them appear to me to be, you know, similar, similar layout that, that they would likely be either over the thirty percent coverage limit or very close to it. At least it appears to me to, to the naked eye. So I don't think this change would, uh, in any way cause our property to be, you know, out of place relative to the rest of the neighborhood. And I think that is, I think that's it.
Okay. Appreciate your candor on this. Do the board members have any questions? A pretty straightforward situation here.
So Jason, for the record, uh, you are maintaining four feet to the lot line, correct? Within pavement?
I, I believe so. Um, I, 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 I think that we're, I, I assume that we would be informed if there was any other possible violations, but.
Okay. I think we can probably deal with that, Rick. Okay. Uh, is there any other comments by the board members, please? Okay, there being none, then, uh, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak regarding Commodore Parkway? Okay, there being none, then the public hearing is closed.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Rick.
Application, I'll, actually I'll read the next two applications together. Application nine A O eight twenty, application Deep Exqali Construction Contractor and Teamsters Local one eighteen, owner of property located at one thirty Metro Park for an area variance in section two O five dash eighteen K to allow, to allow a parking lot expansion to be point two feet from the lot line and move the minimum ten feet required by code. All is clear in the application and plans on file. An application nine A O nine twenty, application Deep Exqali Construction Contractor and Teamsters Local one eighteen, owner of property located one thirty Metro Park for an area variance from section two O five dash eight to allow impervious lock coverage after site improvements to be sixty-nine percent and move the maximum sixty-five percent allowed by code. All is clear in the application and plans on file.
Very good. So who do we have speaking on behalf of one thirty Metro?
This is, uh, Joe Jacobs up with E D R. Uh, the address is two seventy-four North Goodman Street, Rochester, New York.
Okay, Joe, please proceed.
My name's Joe. As a, as we previously mentioned, we're working as a, a agent for the deepest quality construction in the Teamsters Local one eighteen Union at one thirty Metro Park. The, uh, project, uh, action is, uh, two thousand six hundred and seventeen square foot building addition to the rear of the existing building and associated stormwater, sanitary sewer, uh, water, uh, a fire, a new fire service, which is something that has changed from our initial preliminary site plan application. And associated hardscape, that being, uh, additional parking, dumpster pad, uh, dumpster enclosure, relocated shed and green space and landscaping. We're here tonight for, uh, two variances. And previously, as I mentioned, we were, uh, at the site plan, we're at the planning board for a site plan, preliminary site plan. We got tabled because it was identified early on that we needed two variances, one for, uh, drive aisle or parking setback, which is ten feet and the, uh, our impervious coverage. Since that initial preliminary site plan, we have managed to identify areas to cut down our impervious areas to provide more green space, more snow storage. Uh, and also, uh, to essentially lessen the amount of, uh, of variance that we were looking for. Outside of that, uh, I'll open it up to any additional, any questions.
Joe, Joe, can you give us what that new calculation of coverages?
Sure. Uh, I believe the initial, the, our preliminary site plan was seventy-two percent and we got it down to sixty-nine percent. The, uh, code is sixty-five.
Okay. So it's sixty-nine as, as advertised.
Correct.
All right. Very good. Okay. So board members, questions for this gentleman? Okay. Well, I guess, Joe, you got off pretty easy, Joe.
I don't have any air conditioning in my house, so I don't know how.
Okay. Get your fan going.
Yeah, right.
All right. So thank you. We appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
And at this time, is there anyone in the audience would like to speak either related to nine A O eight or nine A O nine regarding one thirty Metro Park? Okay. Uh, it looks like there is no one. So at this point, we'll close the public hearing on both of those applications. Thank you, Joe.
Thank you very much. Have a good night, everybody.
Application nine eight ten twenty, application Philip McCora, owner of property located at four thirty-five Ambassador Drive for one, an area variance in section two O three dash two point one B three, to allow for the construction of an eight hundred and forty-four square foot detached garage in lieu of the maximum six hundred square foot detached garage allowed by code. And two, an area variance in section two O seven dash six A one, to allow set garage to be twenty-four feet height, move the maximum sixteen feet allowed by code. All is clear in the application and plans on file.
Okay. So four thirty-five Ambassador, who are we going to have to speak regarding that?
Paul Galan from DDS Companies.
Okay, Paul. And just give us an address for the record, please.
Address out there is forty-five Hendrix Road in West Henrietta, New York.
Okay. Go right ahead.
All right. So I want to thank first the board for hearing our application this evening. As Rick mentioned, we're seeking two variances, an area variance as well as a height variance, uh, to construct a new detached garage, uh, at four thirty-five Ambassador Drive. The owner purchased the property in May. There is an existing, uh, attached garage, which is actually below, uh, attached garage, which is actually below the residential structure in that's the area. Given that the house was originally constructed in 1928, the space allowed in that garage by existing constructions not sufficient to park the owner's vehicles, which include full sized crew cab pickup truck. As such, the current owners are parking outside, which raises additional concerns. They had a break in over the weekend, which has hastened their desire to move forward with the project. But off topic, so we're seeking an area variance, existing code allows 600 square feet. We're seeking 844 for the principal structure plus a small attached covered entry area, which brings the total square footage to 844 square feet. Additionally, the height variance accessory structures per code are allowed 16 foot in height. Given that we're trying to match the aesthetic of the existing building, we've got a more aggressive pitch on the roof, which brings total height of the structure above grade at that point at 24 feet. Though it's important to mention that from the street, we did have the property surveyed after we completed the application. The site where the garage is proposed, in addition to being 135.5 feet away from the road, grade also drops by five feet from the street level by the time you get back to where the pad is located. So in addition to parking, which is the primary function of the garage for the owners, there's also a storage concern. The existing home, although the footprint looks to be considerable, half of that footprint lower level is not full height basement storage type area. Half of the existing footprint is crawl space. And the other half, which is full height garage or full height basement, excuse me, accessible through that small garage space is, is what they have for storage on the property. So I also have on the call, Mr. Philip Picora, the owner, as we go to opening up to questions, if he can be of any assistance to answer those, he is also available on the call.
Okay, very good. I guess the, the primary is how, how did we calculate the need for 844 plus 60?
So the owner's primary vehicle is large pickup truck and the desire is to have as much storage space as, as we can get for him in that application, 28 feet in depth. While preliminarily might seem like a, a large depth, when we're talking about a vehicle that's just about 20 feet long, we pull that thing in a foot into the garage and then want to get around in front of it. We're not left with a significant amount of space in front of a vehicle that size. So the owner's desire is to be able to utilize as much of the space in this garage as possible, given that he's got limited storage in the home itself and he's got large vehicles to store in there as well.
Okay, so you're, what you're suggesting is this is pretty much the minimum that you could feel would meet his needs?
Correct.
Okay. All right. So questions by the board members, please?
Yes, um, the, do you know what the square footage of the current attached garages?
The current attached garage interior square footage is less than 350 square feet. Like an original construction, 1928, we were dealing with some smaller automotive requirements at that point. So I'm sure it was sufficient at that point.
I think you.
Okay, other questions, please?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Will you be losing the tree down below where you're proposing the new garage? I think there's an evergreen. Will the tree go or?
We will be maintaining as many trees as is possible. There were some trees that were taken out as a matter of a keep on the property after it was purchased. But I believe the intent is that the trees that are now there, our intent is to keep them.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Judy. All right. Any other questions by the board, please?
This is the chairman. Paul, are you proposing any type of second floor to the detached garage?
We would be proposing that a second floor trusses be sheathed to be able to use those as additional storage space on that. In the trust space above, yes.
Are you planning on a pulldown staircase or a permanent staircase?
We haven't worked through the particulars of that. I assume that we would be doing a dropdown at this point, but we haven't detailed that yet.
That brings up another question. What utilities do you plan on for the garage?
Electric.
Just electric?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
It is worth noting, though, on the backside, there is an existing pad that houses the pool mechanicals, which will remain. So the utilities that service that, you know, water pumped back and forth to the pool and then the electric for that will remain.
Are they going inside the garage or are they going to stay on the outside of the garage?
They will remain outside the garage.
Okay, very good. Any other questions, please? Okay, very good. Thank you very much. And at this point, is there anyone on the Zoom call that would like to speak regarding 435 Ambassador?
There might be, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
No, maybe not. I'm sorry.
No, no, you do. Howie raised his hand.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, Howie.
Okay, thank you. I, Howie Jacobson, I live at 10 Sandryham, right down the street from this proposed addition. And I'm totally in favor of what they're proposing. The fact that it's in the back of the property, the height will not be an issue from the road and it will be a nice addition to that piece of property. So as a neighbor, I'm very much in favor of what they're proposing.
Okay, appreciate your comments. Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak regarding this application? Okay, there being none, then the public hearing is closed. Thank you.
Thank you.
It's David. Can I make a point? Can we, I wasn't sure, did, did you close or intend to close the public hearing for the Whole Foods application?
We did close it, yes.
Yeah, I think we should make a motion to keep it open.
I think we'll probably do that, David, when we go through the decision process.
Yeah, that's what I thought. Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
Let's, yeah, let's hold that for now.
That's typically how we do it, but I wanted to make sure.
Right.
Okay.
Application 981120, application of Tokyo Structural Engineers and Design Agent, Todd Ennis and Amanda McIntosh, owners of property located at 133 Summit Drive for area variance from section 205-2 to 1, allow in addition to extend 6.1 feet into the existing 44.2 foot front setback or 60 foot front setback as required by code. And two, allow building lot coverage to be 22% move with a maximum 20% allowed by code. I'll subscribe an application and plans on file.
Okay, who do we have speaking regarding this property?
Good evening. I'm Andy Mall with Mall Enterprises. I'm representing Todd and Amanda.
Okay.
For this application, our double application.
How about an address, sir?
38 Menon Center Road, Pittsford.
Okay, great. Go ahead.
So I've worked with them. They've been in this house for a couple of years. They just had a new baby and they're starting to understand the age of the house and some of the conditions that are restricting them. They spent a lot of time thinking about that and we basically explored a lot of different ideas and we're trying to minimize the impact on any lot or any variance issues. But existing conditions for the garage are that the garage doors, the actual jams on the doors are the same as the inside walls of the garage. So when you pull a car in, you literally can't even open your, your car doors. And the other thing is, is that they don't really have large vehicles, but when they do fit them in there to get them out of the weather, they have to kind of sneak out of their cars and then go outside of the garage to go into the front entryway. And there is, there's no room to walk around the front of the vehicles to get into the entry to the front foyer from the garage. Understandably, it's a two car or two base space, but there's a, it's a stone house that is supported by a center column and beam. And the variance does not include, but the design includes taking up the few feet of space on the east side of the building that's already an overhang, so that we're not encroaching on the side setbacks at all. But by giving them a six foot extension on the garage itself, it will allow them, in combination with that east side extension of the outer wall, to be able to put a larger, or larger garage doors in, which will allow them to get in and out of their cars and also be able to walk in front of their vehicles to get into the existing egress door to the, to the inside of the foyer. The other thing that, to take into consideration here is that there's going to be, we're going to go before the architectural review board eventually or after it, hopefully if we get approved to, for the extent or extension to the front. The, the existing condition in the front entry, I don't know if anybody's done a drive by, but it's very high pitched roofs and both this, both the east side and the street facing side, that roof and the dormers all drain right down above the front entry door. And the actual overhangs, I can reach into the gutter from grade. So there's a tremendous amount of water that's trained right onto the front entryway, which is their main entrance, because there's no other mudroom or anything like that. So what we want to do is, in combination with that extension on the front, is design a way for a new single story roof design to pick up that water load and move it away from the front entrance as well. By doing that, we're also going to be extending the front foyer at the front door and pulling that out to the face, to the face of the new garage extension. Now, that is not going to be all internal space. The objective there is to have a covered overhang so that they can, you know, anybody who's visiting, they have family and friends that are constantly coming by because of the new baby. And right now, they're literally standing in a waterfall or in an ice dam. That's, that's almost impossible to kind of deal with. So they'll have an overhang there. They'll have a, an extension on the foyer, which will allow them to have the existing front door. When you open it, you're literally at the foot of the main staircase. And to the left is the door going into the garage. So there's really no room for any storage or staging when you enter the house. So the objective there is even with the minimal space that we're going to gain with the bump out of, of the foyer and garage, we're going to try to do a little bit of a kind of a mudroom built in on the, in that space with even a stackable washer and dryer so that they can, they can get their laundry out of the, out of the basement as well. The other part of the variance includes going to 22% of the lot coverage. And that is literally related to the fact that there's, in that light gray area, that is intended to be a patio so that they have a place to sit out in front. There's really no backyard to this place. It looks like it's generous, but it's a very steep slope. And the, there's, there's some, you know, there's a place to grill back there, back there, but there's really not any egress to the back. So they'd like a place to just walk out and, and maybe sit and, in their front yard as well. And that is intended to have the roof over the patio so that it's out of the sun and out of the weather. And that's where the, the 2% overage comes from the actual structure, the footprint. That being said, we realize there's, the other thing is the, the neighbors, it doesn't, these are, these are all pre-existing non-conforming houses on this, on this side of the, of the street. And the extension will not be out any further than the neighbors' existing conditions. So the actual setback is, even though it's non-compliant, in, not complying now, it really doesn't change anyone else's perspective or any of the, doesn't stand out from any of the other conditions on the street. The intention is also, we've worked with Tokyo Structural to do a very appropriate design concept, because it's a really unique kind of older stone home. And the intention is to really kind of wow the homeowners and the architectural review board with something that really fits into the neighborhood and character of the house.
Okay, very good. Thank you for your presentation. Board members, questions, please?
Yeah, I, I had a question. I wasn't sure if, if you had a chance to see that one of the neighbors, although supportive in general of the project, has expressed some concern about the enlargement of the front patio area and the effect of water, water runoff that may go down to their property. So is, is there a way you could speak to any provisions that either have or will be made to assure that, you know, rain and snow melt drainage won't, you know, won't be a burden on the neighbor? Thank you.
Absolutely. It hasn't been finalized yet, but the, the, obviously the drainage is a focus of ours. Because right now, it is literally pouring, pouring on their front stoop. The ice dams and the, everything that's being brought into that front area of the house is a, is a primary concern. And how we tie that in to the, either the stormwater or train it to appropriate dry well or condition that doesn't result in any peripheral incidents with the neighbors is definitely already been tabled. So that, one of the things is that we think that may really be a nice tie in because of some of the architectural features that, that are on the house, is even doing a kind of a flat roof system with a parapet wall. So all that, a short parapet wall so that it's, doesn't over, the lines of the home are just beautiful. And we don't really want to take away from that and we don't want to go up into the second floor because then we'd have to work on, you know, all the stone exterior, et cetera. So if we do end up with whatever the roof structure, it's going to be low and deliberate in design to take care of water issues and being able to deal with exactly where that's, where it goes.
Okay, so I, I guess we could summarize that to suggest with Gene's question that, you know, you, you will assure this board that there will be no runoff from the addition of this patio area.
Yes. If we, if we don't, if we can't tie into the drain or the storm drains, then we'll do the appropriate dry well system that will keep the water from runoff.
Okay, all right. Other questions by the board, please?
Yes, what, which, which issue would you say is the most critical out of the different things you, you know, expressed to us tonight?
Well, I think the two most important things are for just the functional use of the, of the home. The garage space just does not accommodate. So the extension towards the front road is, is an obvious gain because it alleviates that and it also gets the vehicles off the driveway, which is better for the neighborhood and the neighbors themselves. So besides that, the, you know, in doing that and tying in the roof systems, the, the water condition and the design, the faulty design of the, of the way the water is being trained now towards the front entrance without any protection to any of the occupants or anybody entering is, is the same type of thing where it, it almost has to change. So how we do that, we're kind of taking care of two things at once. I think the footprint going over 2% is not as big of a, an issue because we can really just only cover a portion of the patio to the, to the right on the west side. And that would probably be appropriate or, or okay with the, with the homeowners. It's just a matter of tying in that roof so it all looks nice and, and it drains and, and, you know, all the lines kind of work. It'll be part of the design concept. This is the maximum that we're looking at as far as the, the footprint with the outline that you're looking there. The light gray is almost an option, but I think because of the way the roof lines are, in order to, to take all that roof water and snow load and snow load and, and everything in that area, it's going to be beneficial to have and the part of the roof at least go over to the west side of the, of the property, of the house.
All right, does that address that? Did you have a concern, Judy? I'm, I'm not sure what.
I just wondered whether the, the current roof situation could be taken care of, and that would solve enough of the problem, doing all of this addition.
Yeah, the, the extension on the garage, it kind of helps, both things help each other. Because you have to create something that's going to allow all that water to be trained someplace, and if you design it into the extension on the foyer, then they get some kind of space when they come in. Right now, it's a young family with no space. When they walk in their house, there's no place to put anything. There's no storage availability in the garage at all. So by creating a, an extra six-foot depth, you're, you're not, you're not building out any further than anyone else on the house, and you're getting now egress from the garage to the new foyer, and you're getting, you're accommodating, you know, the, the width by putting a new structural member in there and being able to put two cars in that you can open the doors. And then the, the front entranceway, you know, obviously their concern is that they, they just don't know what to do. It's just a terrible situation. It's just a poor design. And with the bump out, we can take care of that with a low-profile varies into the character of the building.
Okay, that's good. All right, is there any other questions that any of the board members have?
Mr. Chairman, I would just like to make a statement, more or less. Andy, I understand that the architecturals are not completed at this point in time. I just want you to be aware that if your overhangs are extending into the side yards, it would be back to us for another variance.
Absolutely, we're fully aware of that. Stay within those perimeters.
Okay, great. All right, very good. Okay, so if there are no other questions by the board members is, is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak regarding this application? Okay, there being none, then the public hearing is closed.
Thank you to everyone.
Thank you very much. Do you folks need a few minutes here before we start, or no?
Yes, can we have a few?
Yeah, so it's 8:54. Why don't we start at nine o'clock? Thank you.
Dennis?
Yes.
At nine o'clock, is that something that we should stick around for if we want to hear results, or is that something we should call in tomorrow for?
Well, it's really up to you because what we're, we're doing, we'll just, we can only go in the order that we have because we're not sure who's really still hearing.
Okay.
So, yeah, if you're interested, you could stay on and listen, but other than that, you could call Rick in the morning and get the results.
That's all right. All right, thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay.
Dennis?
Yes.
How you doing? Yeah, it's, um, I still don't have this zoomed down. I, now I got just you in front of me, you know?
Oh, that's nice.
Yeah, not really.
You'd rather look at somebody else, or what?
Yeah, you know what I mean, though? I still kind of play around with, like,
Okay.
Getting everybody's.
You've got to go up to the top and where it says gallery with lots of little squares.
Yeah, I don't, I know, I used to have that, but I don't have it.
Oh. Maybe you could. Maybe you can talk to Mr. Fritsch tomorrow and he can assist you in the ins and outs of Zoom.
Right. I think, David, you have to hit the, the gallery thing to start out with, and then you'll get at least some of us, you know, down the side, and then, and then all of us, when there's no, you know, application. Because I'm not techie at all, believe me.
No, I think I got it, though.
Okay.
All righty. Okay. Now we're getting there. I see Judy, I see Andrea, I see David. Jean and Kathy, are you on?
Yeah, I am.
Jean is.
All right, how about Kathy?
No. She's, there she is.
Okay, she's there? Okay.
Yep.
Hi Kathy, okay. All right, well then let's, let's get started then. Okay, so where we're going to begin is at 7A04, which is the table 60 Helen Road with the garage addition, so why don't we go down? Andrea, it's yours, so what are your thoughts here?
Um, I'm happy, you know, with the analysis this time. I don't know how they're going to figure out the driveway issue, but I think that that's theirs to, to figure out. I, I'm fine with what the application actually says.
Okay. All right, and Rick, just a question. I mean, from a technical perspective here, this is not a an easy assignment to decide about these access points. I mean, is it reasonable to separate these issues?
I'm not sure what you're asking, Dennis.
Well, I realized that, okay, I realized that we can't do anything about the access based on what we did last month.
Right.
Right, but I mean, my question here is, it sounds like they understood that they would need to come back with something here to figure out, or is there a way to connect it the way it is to the existing, which would seem to be somewhat?
I, I mean, if you, if you look at the, if you look at what they proposed, I, I understand they want to keep the driveway that exists, but that driveway just goes to the house. The garage has been modified, the existing driveway.
Right.
I, I don't understand why they can't move the driveway over to where the new detached garage is, remove the driveway in front of the old attached garage, and then possibly make some kind of veer-off that puts cars closer to the house.
I think you're right. I think that's possible, but I guess my question really, though, is from our perspective, should we be seeing that? Because obviously the only way to see it is next month.
Well, we don't need to see it if they just come back and say, this is what we're doing, when they apply for the building permit for the garage. We're, we're removing the existing driveway and we're putting a new driveway in. We don't need to see that. All we need to know is that the, the new detached garage is going to be accessible, which is required. It has to be accessible by a vehicle, so you can't just drive over grass. Or they could come back to us, request the rehearing on the second curb cut.
Okay, so, so then, in other words, with a condition that relates to the compliance related to not driving over grass, that would cover that? And then it really be incumbent on them to come up with some feasible design? Okay. Okay, that's good. All right, Jean, what do you think?
Um, I wasn't at the first meeting when they went through this, but it looks like with these materials, it does look like they've made improvements, and I do appreciate that they took the time to show the factors of their location, so I'm, I'm okay with it.
Okay, Judy?
Yes, I think it's a very good effort that they reduce the size of it, and they really, it really does sit low, and if you're standing there and looking out at the road, it's still below the road, so it's not going to look as tall as if you were right next to it. I think they've made a very good effort.
Okay, Kathy? Is her, is she muted, or?
Uh, she has poor connection. She says by, she's connected by phone.
Oh, boy.
I think she said she agreed with what I had said.
Oh.
That's what it came.
Are you a translator, or I guess you're a translator?
I, I picked up bits and pieces.
Okay, well, that's okay. It's a good skill to be a translator, that's fine. Okay, so, all right. And I, and I feel they've made an effort to, and I think with the right conditions here, we should be okay to put them in a position to do what they need to do. Okay, so Andrea?
Andrea, can you just make sure when you make your motion that you refer to the amended size of garage?
Yeah.
I'll just tell you, originally it was
Nine sixty.
Nine sixty, and then taking it down to eight forty.
Yeah, that's a lot.
Okay.
Okay, and, and real quick, can I just mention that in my findings of fact, then?
No, I'd rather, in your motion itself, that you approve a garage of 840 square feet in lieu of the original 960 square feet, and just do it that way.
Okay, just put it in.
And then, then you can do it in your findings also, but.
Okay.
So I moved to approve application 7A-04-20, et cetera. To approve a garage of 840 square feet in lieu of the 950 square feet proposed in the application, but otherwise as described in the application and plans on file. Number one, the granting of the requested variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or be a detriment to nearby properties. The properties along Helen Road and the surrounding streets are relatively large lots, several of which have outbuildings, and at least some appear to be over 900 square feet in size. Further, the location of this proposed outbuilding is located behind two trees on the property. Thus, the construction of this larger detached garage of 100, I'm sorry, of 840 square feet will not appear out of place or negatively affect surrounding properties visually. Number two, the requested variance is not substantial given the size of the property. Number three, the benefits sought by the applicant cannot reasonably be achieved by any other method. Applicant noted its desire to house large specialty equipment that is necessary for their hobbies, which equipment are inappropriate to be placed inside of a traditional home, and thus require an outbuilding of some sort. Due to the need for vehicular traffic to the rear of the property for tree maintenance and the topography and tree placement on the property, the current location as proposed is the most appropriate for a detached garage slash outbuilding. Number four, there is no evidence that the proposed variance will have an adverse effect or impact on physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district, period, sorry, conditions. Number one, the variance granted herein applies only to the detached garage described in, and then the location as depicted on the application and in the testimony given. In particular, it shall not be more than 840 square feet. Number two.
Andrea?
Yes.
Could you just add at the end of that, as shown on revised plans submitted
Sure.
For my mind, too.
Sure, in particular, the garage shall be no more than 840 square feet as shown on the revised plans presented to the board on September 2nd, 2020.
Thank you.
Number two, the garage shall at no time be permitted to include toileting facilities or be otherwise used as extended living space. Number three, all water displaced by the structure shall be specifically directed onto the property and not onto adjacent properties. Number four, number four, the garage must have paved access in compliance with code. And number five, all permits and approvals shall be obtained.
Okay, how about a second, please?
Second, Judy.
Okay.
The motion is to approve with conditions. Ms. Dale?
Yes.
Mr. Mites?
Yes.
Ms. Schmidt? Um, we're going to have Kathy, is there any way you could call in?
She's losing connectivity.
Oh, she texted yes.
She texted yes, I got that. Ms. Schwartz?
Yes.
And?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion to approve with conditions carries.
Okay, very good. Okay. Oh. Excuse me. Pardon me. Okay, so the next application relates to the restaurant on West Ten Red Road. There was a lot of extra material that was given this month, and so, and you heard the presentation, so why don't we go around again and see what people think, so. Andrea, what do you think?
Well, can I suggest maybe we, I switch it up a little bit, just because Dennis, with your background with fire, you know, and emergency services, I'd love to hear your opinion first on this one. Just because I, I definitely am more out of my element on this application than some of the other ones.
Okay, no, that's fine if everybody would like to hear that, that's fine.
Go ahead.
All right, so I guess in taking this apart, you know, we can talk about general construction and what, what's being presented here is that, you know, because the, the regulations suggest that when you reach a threshold of the amount of construction that's done, then it triggers the code application of the sprinkler. And they offered that that happened somewhat innocently and that they didn't expect they would have to spend this much money, and you know, I asked the question about the 225,000, and they suggested it's that or more, so I guess that's the testimony as to how this occurred. Because one would normally think that if you're aware that that's going to be a problem with the project, that you would consider it in the beginning, not at the end.
Yeah.
Well, so that's, we heard the facts as they were given to us. And, you know, we read Chris Roth's assessment here last month, which has not changed, and what his opinion is, so I think, you know, as it relates to, to that, you know, anecdotally, I guess it's interesting that certain restaurants I think, you know, as it relates to that, you know, anecdotally, I guess it's interesting that certain restaurants, we would have to look at why does the Char Brawl or why does some other restaurant fit into that, you know, scenario when they were renovated as to why they didn't meet the code requirement or reach the threshold. So I think it's a little bit difficult to try to assess them that way and suggest by numbers of how many do and how many don't. But I think, you know, we're looking at a pretty straightforward situation here and, you know, we have an opinion by the fire marshal. So if that helps, that's kind of the way I would assess this.
And just a quick question to clarify, because this, the revised letter was kind of sent out on Friday, I think. So that Chris Roth has read it, digested it, and has no response. He, you know, stands hasn't changed any part of his opinion.
Right.
Okay.
All right. Okay, so, so based on all of that, I mean, I think we we all suggested last month that Mr. Gere has certainly done a yeoman's effort to clean this building up. It looks a lot better from the outside and certainly wish him luck running a restaurant. However, you know, it's our responsibility to react to this. So so Andrea, let me come back your way then.
One of Chris Roth's, where the, Chris Roth's point was that he thought some of the costs were essentially inflated and that some of these things wouldn't be necessary or could be done by other methods through you know, different products or different strategies. I think.
What, what, let me just ask you though, what, how does that matter in what you think about it? Because, you know, as you know, until you actually bid something out in construction that you can't get an exact price. And whether somebody could look at this water pressure issue and not need a fire pump, you know, is really an engineering thing that there's no way we're going to ascertain whether that's correct or not. Okay, because I imagine it's a matter of record out there with the water authority, what the pressure is out there at the street. And in order to operate a sprinkler system, then obviously, it has to be at minimum. So so I guess we somewhat could take them at their word that it isn't.
And we don't know, any idea how many of our restaurants fully comply with the town sprinkler codes?
You're fading. Can you say that again, please?
Sorry, I was wondering if there was any idea how many of our property restaurants fully comply with the town sprinkler code.
I don't know that answer. That would be a question for the fire marshal.
Yeah, and also, as I pointed out, Andrea, it's also related to when they were renovated, when the code, you know, changed. There's just so many factors there that you couldn't easily answer that question fairly, really.
I mean, yeah, it's very interesting because restaurants under New York State Building Code, restaurants of under a hundred.
Yeah.
You know, a hundred load, a hundred person load doesn't require these sprinklers. You know, it still requires some type of fire retardant system around the grill area.
The ansel system, right?
The ansel system, correct. But the overall building, it doesn't.
Okay. All right. So what's your thought here, Andrea?
I mean, I could go either way on it, but it is hard to grant a variance, a bulk variance, where really the only hardship is money.
Well, but this, this is the thing about, it's a little different because it's not so much a bulk variance. It is relief from our sprinkler ordinance. One of the issues, one of the ways that we can grant relief of our sprinkler system ordinance is if we feel that there is a financial burden to the property owner in installing that on that sprinkler system.
And this, at best case scenario, according to the documents they presented, would increase their cost by at least twenty-five percent.
What, seventy thousand dollars, sixty thousand, seventy thousand dollars?
Yeah. And they think they testified they spent somewhere around two hundred to two hundred and fifty.
Yeah, somewhere at two twenty-five. And they're not done allegedly yet. The trucks are still out there, probably.
Yeah, I mean, I could approve it. I Yeah, I'm interested to see kind of where the board falls on this in general because this feels.
I'll go next.
Yeah, go ahead, Jean.
Well, just to try to throw you a lifeline there because this is a tricky one. And I struggled with it too. I you know, I don't, I don't really know why the Brighton code is stricter than New York State in this case. And I certainly would never want to go against a fire marshal's recommendation. I actually did not. I saw the original letter from the fire marshal with all of the questions. And then I saw the long response sort of with all the answers. I did, if there was yet another communication from the fire marshal either responding to those answers or not, I didn't. I guess I must have missed it because I'm not really comfortable going against what the fire marshal said. But but I do think that if the applicant and they did state that they are willing to enforce that they will have less than a hundred people. And they did, you know, they spoke to it, but it was also in their application about you know, the fire alarm system and the new sprinklers in the kitchen and the kitchen setup and the upgraded building materials and so on. You know, the question sort of is, is that, you know, is that, is that enough? And I was sort of prepared to say that I think that could be enough. Again, I don't know why Brighton's code is different than the state. But if we do limit it to a hundred people and we force them to put all of the things that they said in their application, I think I, I think I could be comfortable. I, I don't know if it matters that this restaurant or that this location in the past has operated with less than, I mean, it's still an improvement from what existed there before. And it does sound like part of the issue here was a lapse in continuous occupancy, which sort of lost some rights previously. So I don't know. I I guess I don't want to go against the fire marshal, but I don't see, he asked a bunch of questions. But I didn't see the fire marshal say absolutely this should be denied. He just asked a bunch of questions about the costs.
Okay, Judy?
The cost could come down because they said they would put a generator and Chris said that that wouldn't be necessary and could even cause more problems. So if that were factored out, that would bring their costs down.
I think it was factored out, Judy.
Was it?
Yeah, and that bottom line number that Mr. Fisk offered, I believe the generator was not in that.
Oh, all right. Okay. I agree with Jeannie. It is hard to go against the fire marshal because they're there to protect us and the business as well. I'm a little bit easier knowing that the kitchen will be, you know, sprinkler and they're taking precaution there. Does it get into planning board with assuring us that there will be less than a hundred seats? Where is that guaranteed, Rick?
Well, you got to remember that this board granted them basically under the use variance with the, with the original plan that came to us for the use variance showed like sixty-six seats or something like that. But right now, they're limited to sixty-six seats.
Okay.
They want more. They have to come back to us to ask for more seats.
Okay, so we're guaranteed in the sixty-six at this moment?
That's all they have a right to.
Okay.
Sixty-four or sixty-six.
Okay.
Could be off to.
Okay, I am a little torn. I hate to see, you know, a business person in this situation, you know, not be able to go forward. I think there are enough, you know, precautions built into this. So I think I would be fairly comfortable.
Okay, Kathy, can we, is she on the phone here? We can hear. She got to give us a note here.
But it says I can't unmute until the host unmutes me. So Jeff's working on that.
Okay.
Okay.
Been working out for a while, so I'm not sure what.
Okay, well, while we're doing that, I'll give you my thoughts if you want. So, so I, while I understand the comments, you know, I think that you know, as far as why is the Brighton code above the New York State Building Code? Because again, when, when the New York State Building Code was changed, there were issues in there that the code enforcement folks, et cetera, decided, you know, needed a little more oomph. And Brighton is, by the way, not the only town that has requirements that are over the New York State Building Code. Okay, so, and as far as Chris Roth's comments, my understanding is he hasn't changed his position based on the information. So I guess we got to take him at his word as far as what his recommendation is. And I guess the other part that, you know, again, it's just my personal opinion is that, you know, the gentleman we're talking about here, while he is a restaurateur, he's been in the building construction business for at least fifteen years. And I think, you know, what probably happened here is whether the thing slipped away from him or not, that, you know, the economics of whether doing a restaurant of sixty seats or ninety, you know, is not in my pay grade as far as deciding what the economics of that is. But as it relates to what does it cost to renovate this building and properly do what the code requires, then that's something that should have been looked at. So that's why I have a little bit of a problem and I think I would not be supportive of this.
You can go either way, really.
Did we, are we able to get Kathy anyway here?
And real quick, I'll just, I'll note, it seems like Chris Roth's letter, he did say he supports the current code as written and that the building should be sprinkler. He said if, you know, wanted more information, but that was his letter. And if he hasn't changed his opinion, that is what his letter said.
That's great.
That's correct. We would have gotten something from him if he had changed his opinion.
What did you say, Rick? You're cutting out.
We would have received something from him if he had changed his position.
If he had changed? Okay.
All right, well, we're kind of stuck here because obviously.
All right, well, I'm not going to go against, I'm not going to go against the fire marshal. I mean.
I don't mean stuck on that. We need Kathy because we need the vote. We need the vote. Okay.
He's on now, right, Kathy?
Her video is there, but I don't know about.
They're just having trouble, Rick, just getting her audio.
Yeah, I don't know what's going on with it. Maybe, maybe if she, you know, Kathy, if you can hear me, why don't you call in on my telephone? And at least I can have you.
Relay.
Relayed or something like that.
Yeah, because we got a lot of work to do here. We got to keep ourselves rolling here.
Rick, maybe put it on speaker and you could hear her when she wants to talk.
Right, that's what I'll, that's what I'll do. Kathy, can you, if you can hear me, dial seven eight four five two two eight. I'll send that over to you in the chat.
Yes, it looked like she could hear.
An alternative might be if her, asking her to log into the Zoom call on her phone instead of.
She already did that.
Do you have her cell phone, Judy?
She's, she has tried to get on our cell phone and I don't, we have had troubles unmuting.
Yes.
Phone call.
Oh, she wants you to say the number again.
Yes, I just sent it over on the chat.
Okay.
All right. Well, before we get to Kathy here, so where are the board members, the four board members? I think you know where I stand. So Andrea, where do you stand, please?
Yeah, I'm, I'm happy to support a denial on this one.
Okay, Judy?
Yeah, I have to deny.
Okay, Jean.
Yeah, I'm okay with that. I'll need a little help writing it up, but yeah.
All right, well, then we have four votes to deny it. So I appreciate Kat. We'll try to work with Kathy here, but why don't we, why don't we move forward here? And sure, we can help you.
Yeah, I should.
Are you there? Okay, what I'm going to do is I'm going to I'm afraid we're going to get some feedback reports. So let me just try to hold the phone up to the, my audio. See if you can hear everything. I lost.
Yes.
Yeah, I just lost the telephone too, so.
Well, let's, let's get started because there are four votes for it anyway. So let's, let's, we got to move on. We got a lot of work to do here. Okay, Jean, so.
All right.
What help would you like?
If we're, and it's Jeannie, but thanks.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's, that's okay. Um, I, I'm not sure. I had written it up as a, as an approval. So from a denial perspective, I guess I would say okay, a motion to deny application eight A oh seven twenty based on the following findings of fact. And I would say.
See if this works.
Hang on one second, Jeannie.
Right, Jean.
Okay, I would, I'm sorry. I would say although the building is in compliance with New York State laws, it is not in compliance with the town of Brighton's local sprinkler law, which requires sprinklers to be provided in this type of structure and use classification.
You could add just maybe one thing, say, due to the amount of construction that has been done on the building.
Oh, all right, sure.
Little sentence would be helpful.
And also maybe some of the alterations that have been previously done on the building?
I think we could stay out of that. That's, there's, there's no way to separate what is and isn't. So go ahead, you.
Okay, what did I say? The building, although the building is in compliance with New York State laws, it is not, it is not compliant with Brighton's local sprinkler law, which requires sprinklers to be provided in this type of structure and use classification. And you said and renovations or and construction. I guess and construction. I don't know what else to say. It's not, it's not in compliance. Do we say?
Well, you could talk about.
It would just, this is basically from Chris Ross's letter that you could say that based on the configuration and use of the building, it appears that patrons may need additional time for egress. And we believe a sprinkler system is required in order to protect occupants from unobserved fires in other building areas.
Ooh, that's good.
Because of the sprinkler system.
I like that. Okay, thank you. That was very helpful.
Okay. I'm not sure how much more we really need here, I think. But go ahead. Do you have some other thought?
No, I was going to just try to say what Andrea said again.
Okay, go right ahead.
Okay, so number two would be based upon the configuration and use of the building. It appears that patrons would need additional time of egress that the sprinkler law is meant to provide. And as well as additional protection from fires that may start in other areas of the building.
Can we, Dennis, there is a seventy-three thirty-four, there are grounds for appeal. Can we make a finding of, I think the four findings are no undue economic hardship that the doing, putting in the sprinkler is not legally or physically impossible. And that there are viable alternatives. There are there are no real viable alternatives which meet the intended objective of our sprinkler ordinance.
Well, that's a mouthful. Okay, as far as the math goes, I mean, we can only comment as it relates to what's been submitted because again, it's, I wouldn't even call it an engineer's estimate, really. It's just some kind of estimate. So I'm not sure how to go at the math because I'm not sure that's what, why we're moving in this direction. So what, how do you feel that comment is going to help?
Well, it, it just shows, those are the things that if they can show those things, you know, they have, they have kind of the right, you know, they have a, an argument that, that it should be allowed. But I, I didn't see real evidence of undue economic hardship. And, and I don't think we saw any real viable alternatives which met the intended objective of the.
Yeah, and I think that's where, I mean, they offered some mitigation, but it certainly doesn't cover the entire.
Doesn't do it. Right. And I think that's what we, you've just got to make sure we say that.
Can you go at that, Jeanne, maybe?
Um, okay, um, I would say the, the application and testimony did not adequately prove economic hardship from compliance with the town sprinkler law.
Good. And then maybe, and, and the mitigations offered did not cover the entire restaurant.
Thank you. And mitigations offered did not cover the entire restaurant. I also, we had that something about we don't find that, it is not determined that putting in a sprinkler system that complies with the code would be impossible to achieve. And the alternatives suggested by the applicant are not, are deemed to not be sufficient to properly provide for the safety of patrons.
Perfect.
All right, that sounds good.
Thank you for your help.
No problem.
Yeah.
Effort here.
I'll second that.
Okay, great. Okay.
I'm sorry, Andrea, you seconded that?
Yes. It's Genie and Andrea. We're not going to get yelled at anymore tonight, okay?
The motion is to deny the request. Ms. Schmidt? Ms. Schmidt?
Is he on the phone?
Yeah, she is. And she said yes, she agreed.
Okay, great. Thank you, translator.
Mr. Mikes?
Yes.
Ms. Schwartz?
Yes.
Ms. Tompkins, right? Ms. Dale?
Yes.
Motion to deny the request carries.
Okay, very good. So that's two down. And now we're into September.
Yeah.
Okay. So now we're over to the animal hospital. That's number one and number two. So let's do, we got to do those separately, I think. Okay, so number one, you know, relates to the parking stalls and the access. So let's go quickly here. Judy, what do you think?
I think it'll be okay.
Okay. Andrea?
Yeah, I have no issues with it.
Okay, Jeanne?
Yeah, I think it's fine.
Yeah, I think it's fine too. And Kathy?
Fine.
Fine, okay. Go ahead, Jeanne.
Okay, a motion to approve application 9A0120, blah, 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 based on the following findings of fact. Number one, the need for additional parking is driven by the need for specialized staff and an increased patient load as the hospital provides new services enabled by technology development and, okay, enabled by technology development. Number two, the section of Monroe Avenue where the property is located is well-established commercial use. And the changes proposed will not result in a change to the character of the neighborhood or be a detriment to nearby properties. Number three, the proposed parking area and, or will add 11 parking spaces and will be located along the east property line adjacent to existing double drive-through lanes of the bank. Pavement up to and adjacent to the side property lines is not uncommon along Monroe Avenue. Number four, the difficulty necessitated by necessitating the variance request cannot be resolved in another manner, not requiring a variance, as the only area available to expand the parking area is along the east property line. Number five, the applicant, oh, I had, will designate, um, let's see, the applicant will instruct its employees to park in the new eight-foot-wide parallel parking spaces in order to reduce the frequency of different vehicles using them throughout the day. Number six, Brighton Town Code does not address the width of parallel parking spaces, but the requested eight-foot width is industry standard for such parking. And number seven, the 12-foot one-way drive aisle will be sufficient for one-way circulation. And number eight, there are no plans for any connection of vehicular traffic to the new Whole Foods Plaza. A new fence will be placed without a gate in order to prevent such access. Conditions, new plantings and trees to be installed to mitigate the impact of the new parking spaces as per application provided and testimony given.
Second.
Great. Can we also add unnecessary planning board approval shall be obtained?
Please, thank you.
Okay, Judy, second?
Right, yes.
Okay, the motion is to approve with conditions. Let me see if this works. Ms. Schmidt? Yes, did you guys hear her say yes?
Yeah.
As long as you did.
Great. Yeah, I know. I just wanted, when it's her turn to make a motion, I just want to make sure.
Yeah, we're going to have to figure out how to do that one. Okay.
Mr. Mikes?
Yes.
Ms. Tompkins, right? Ms. Schwartz?
Yes.
And Ms. Dale?
Yes.
Motion to approve with the conditions carries.
Okay. All right. So then we have the second part, which relates to the paving and then the impervious where it's now actually 82% instead of 77%. Any concerns by anybody on this?
I don't.
No.
None? Okay. All right. So I'll do that one. I will, we approve application 9A0120, or 9A0220, based on the following finds of fact.
Dennis, could you also just make a comment in there that the increase?
Yes, yes. And I'll just say, based on the, before I say that findings of fact, I'm sorry. 902, as amended for impervious coverage to be 82% in lieu of the 77%, which was in the original application.
Thank you.
Based on the following findings of fact. One, the proposed zero lot line adjacent to the Bank of America property will not cause any negative effect on the character of the neighborhood due to this continuous condition in neighboring properties. Two, the property and neighboring properties are commercial in nature and safe, adequate parking is required to accommodate clients in this high-traffic area. Three, while the increase from 73 to 82% as amended appears substantial, neighboring properties have similar or greater coverage and attempts will be made to mitigate same by landscaping. Four, no other plan to increase the parking requirements of this business can be achieved or can achieve, can achieve the desired result. And conditions, one, this is based on testimony given and drawing submitted. And what do you need for permits here, Rick?
Basically, I would just, I would just continue unnecessary planning board approvals.
Okay, that's what I thought it was too. Okay. Can we get a second?
Second, Judy.
Okay.
Motion is to approve with conditions. Ms. Tompkins, right?
Yes.
Ms. Dale?
Yes.
Ms. Schmidt?
Right.
Wow.
Ms. Schwartz?
Yes.
And Mr. Mikes?
Yes.
Motion to approve with conditions carries.
Okay. Our next one, to keep ourselves rolling here, is the carports over at the back of the apartments there on Monroe Avenue. In my professional opinion, they're in really bad condition. So I can understand why they might want to make a change here.
You know what? Inside, I, when I looked, they had, I don't know the right terminology from a builder's standpoint, but I think it might be called the Joyce. There was brand-new wood along every single one of them. So they have done some interior improvement.
Yeah, I think that, that was because the roof was probably imminent of collapse previously. That's probably why.
Right. I mean, we, when we first bought our house, we had a flat-top garage roof and it hadn't been maintained. But if it's maintained, it, it will be fine. And I think that they should. I think that it's a wonderful amenity for anybody who lives in this part of the country. I really do. I also think that they afford the people on Newcrest a little bit more privacy rather than just these cars in and out all the time. So I, I am prepared to deny it. I think they could repair the, the roof either with new tarp paper, or I think there's even possibly a lightweight shingle. But I think they're just taking the easy way out. And I don't think that, that they should be.
Well, I understand, Judy, the expense of this is significant. So I don't, I think, I don't think it's really correct to say they're taking the easy way out. You know, not only is the removal of this building expensive, you know, because you got, you may have asbestos concerns with the age of this. So the demolition of this is not a simple thing to do. And then obviously, the replacement of all this asphalt would have to be done because you can't just take the building down and leave the existing asphalt that's there. So, so I think it's a pretty significant expense. So I mean, it may have been nice for them to include some, you know, evidence of, of those expenses maybe, but I, I can assure you it's a significant expense.
Right. But it's made of masonry. It's not made of wood. So those walls are, are sturdy. They really, some paint is chipped, but there were no really evidences of sagging walls and cracks and so on. I think it's really pretty durable. I granted, the roof is not great because you can see the stains and, you know, the rafters inside, but that certainly could be repaired far less than demolition.
Okay. Well, we're debating something that we don't have facts on, so we see what everyone else thinks. Jeanne, E?
Can I, can I ask a question real quick? Just kind of the, the backup for this. What's the purpose? Is it for privacy for neighboring property owners? Is that why we require multifamily buildings to have covered parking?
No, it's truly for the ability to keep cars under cover in multi-residential properties. We require, even with new construction today, we require at least one covered space per unit.
Okay, sorry, Genie. I just wanted to, I, I didn't understand what, what the purpose was, so.
No, I, I, I was prepared to say yes to this. I, I, I was not concerned. I, I mean, I'm, I don't live there, and so I, I, I get, I'm lucky enough to have a garage to park my car in. But I, I feel like it's, I understand the desire and I, I don't think it's, I don't think it's a problem.
Okay.
Kathleen answered a question. Kathleen, go ahead.
Well, someone just asked a question I had, which was, why is there a code provision that says you need to have the 40 covered parking spaces? But invited the master that said that it's a requirement that, that you have coverage for cars. I did not hear any testimony, and maybe it's because my audio went out, that where they talked about why they don't feel, say that the people who live there no longer need to have the coverage for their cars.
Well, he, he did make a comment about, you know, what was being stored in there, how it was being stored, what other places storage could be. I don't remember him suggesting, you know, surveying the people to ask them what they thought, whether they should have covered parking or not, but.
Right.
I, go ahead.
Yeah, one of the interesting things about these covered parking spaces is that these places usually charge you for having a covered space. So in essence, a lot of times people don't care if they get charged, you know, don't care if they have a covered space because they don't want to pay the extra $25, $50 a month in rent. So I, I don't know if that's the case at this particular place, but a lot of times that's why you see, you know, a lot of these carports half-empty.
Hope it, if that helps, Kathy, because I don't think anything else that I can recall that he said that evidenced that one way or the other about what the people thought, so.
The other items that gave me concern about this is that I didn't clearly understand how they're going to make that area look better. They just kind of threw out over 50 in the one part of the broken fence, but that fence has been broken for a really long time. And there was no mention of, like, specifically what landscaping that they would do.
Right.
Why make it look better.
Yeah, I did ask that question. And I think we've, in numerous applications, handled it the same way, where we could offer a, a condition that suggested that there be mitigation for that area. And again, we're not landscape architects here on the zoning board, but we can certainly suggest to them that, you know, some mitigation would be necessary.
Yeah, that, that was a.
And talk about the repair of the fence.
That was a major concern with the planning board. One of the reasons they tabled it because they weren't satisfied with the fact that nothing was being proposed along that rear property line in terms of screening for all the additional headlights that would be shining in there.
Right.
Especially since most of that existing vegetation is deciduous and come winter time, there's not going to be any up there. The fence does provide some blockage, but as those cars get further away, the lights end up going over the fence. So there's a number of things that they could do to help mitigate that problem.
And, and he did, when we questioned it, he offered that they would be willing to do same. It's just that he didn't have any specific plan as we asked him, so. Okay, so where, where are you, Andrea?
I ask one more question. Rick, do you know, do our neighboring towns have similar, I should say, I lived in a lot of apartments through college and law school and, and in my young twenties, none of which ever provided covered parking. Do our surrounding towns have codes that also similarly require covered parking?
I can't totally say yes or no to that, Andrea, but I can tell you that it's not uncommon.
Yeah, okay. No, that's helpful. Because the other thought, thought is, we just, we live off of Edgewood Avenue near, I think it's Briar Manor, maybe apartments. And I don't think they have any covered parking that I've ever seen.
They do. Briar Manor does.
Greystone? Greystone has quite a bit of.
They do.
Okay.
However, there are numerous complexes in Brighton that do not. One of the largest ones would be Rustic Village.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I, I don't have a problem granting it. I think that, yeah, I, I, I think that it's fine. But I do, would, would want a condition and the approval that specifically calls out screening for the property owners.
Yep, that makes sense. All right. How about Kathy then?
Well, I'm still troubled when I go through and suppose the legal side of this and say, you know, can it be solved in another manner? And the answer is yes, and you just fix it. And will it change the neighborhood? And I think it would be substantial because until they tell me they're going to actually put off the fitting screening as opposed to something that will grow off five years from now. It really gives me pause. And so without that information, I would vote no.
Can I just say, Kathy, that many times the zoning board will defer to the planning board on matters of screening. Knowing the fact, and David, you can certainly, since you were at the planning board meeting, chime in here, that was a major concern of theirs. And they did table their application, so they have to go back to the planning board. And I think if we have a condition that basically says that it's screened as per approved by the planning board, I think what we'll get would be, would satisfy this board overall. So I will throw that, I will throw that out for you, Kathy, to be a little more comfortable if you think that's the only thing that's holding you back.
It's, it, it's an issue. It's not going to slip by the planning board. They're on it. And I think, didn't we request, I believe we requested actual landscaping plans. And I think, didn't we request, I believe we requested actual landscaping plans?
Yeah, I believe, I believe you did.
Okay, all right, so where are we on this here? We gotta keep ourselves rolling here. So Judy, are you? You're there, denied, okay. Jeanie?
I was, I was okay with it.
Okay. You would approve, Andrea?
Yes, I would.
Okay, and I would as well, so.
You know, it really gives me pause, I just think that they could, I think that they could resolve it if I couldn't see that. And I just don't think they need all the provisions for it, so I would vote no.
All right, so what we have is possibly, we're not going to be able to come to an agreement tonight. We need a four vote to carry it. Since they're going back to the planning board anyways, I would suggest that we table this. We can, hopefully, the planning board can, if they're satisfied with what's presented to them, and provide us with guidance for whether or not we want to prove it or deny it, and then plus we will have one more person. That doesn't mean we'll still get a four vote, but might give us a better chance to get four one way or the other.
Okay, that sounds reasonable. What do you think Judy, because let's move on with it.
I mean, yeah, we have to table, so I mean, I'm not happy, but if, yeah, I mean.
Well, my next question is, do you want to table it and leave the public hearing open? Or table it and just say, go back to the planning board and we'll make our decision based on what is presented to the planning board?
I don't think the planning board necessarily looks at it the same way we do as a zoning board. I mean, I think there's very.
Let me just say this Judy, if, if there's other concerns besides, I mean, if you truly have concerns with the fact that it's not meeting code and they're taking down garages, that, that's fine. If your concern is, I'm, I'm concerned with that they're not going to provide proper screening and, you know, and everything like that, then that's the only thing, and we can certainly, you know, defer to the planning board on that, because that's their concern too.
But wouldn't, couldn't we leave it open, Rick, and then we could see what the planning board eventually did? They could submit it?
Yeah, we could table it and just leave the public hearing open, or close it and just still get revised plans.
Okay.
Or we could certainly bring them back and discuss the revised plan. Up to you guys, there's two roads to go.
All right, well, all right, so I think tabling it related, and leaving the public hearing is fine, because we're going to get the comments of the planning board either way. All right, so we're just going in the circle here a little. Okay, so again, whether we agree with them or not, we'll have an opportunity to listen to them, so.
Okay.
All right. So we need at least four to table, I hope we have that.
Yeah. Okay, I'm fine with it too. All right, Judy, please. Judy.
I said table.
Yeah, whose motion is it?
Judy.
It was mine, I moved that we table application 9A0320 to hear more from a planning board.
Why don't be a little more specific in regards to what you, what you would like to see? A landscaping plan mitigating the impact of vehicle headlights due to the removal of the carport? So they know what, why we're tabling it, I mean.
Okay, that's fine, Rick, I think. So are you okay with that, Judy?
Well, my feeling is that, that there should be carports. So I, I mean, I don't think that, that there will be enough, you know, landscaping to really satisfy giving protection to cars in the winter, which.
So your point, I guess, your situation is that you don't care about the, you don't care about the screening, because you're gonna say you need, you need carports, period.
Yeah, I really do.
And then you shouldn't be tabling the application.
Okay.
You should have a table.
I withdraw my table.
The tabling is not helping you make your decision.
No, it's not really, no.
I'll, I'll make a motion.
Yes, please do, Andrea.
I move to table application 9A-03-20 and request, in order for the planning board to consider the applicant's planning board application and to determine what additional screening may be required with respect to the demolition of the two carports.
Okay, I think that's probably fine. Second?
I'll second it.
Okay, Jeanie?
The motion is to table and leave the public hearing open, 9A0320, Ms. Schmidt? Ms. Schwartz? Mr. Mites?
Yes.
Ms. Dale?
Yes.
Ms. Tompkins, right?
Yes.
Motion to table and leave the public hearing open, carries.
Okay. So the next situation is our infamous project on Monroe Avenue. And, and the part that's interesting here before we go forward is that, you know, both the attorney that spoke for the application and Rick also informed us, there's a bunch of materials that have just been recently submitted that, that obviously none of us have seen. So I think it pretty much indicates that for us to make some kind of educated decision, the only thing we can really do here is table this application. And as far as the public hearing goes, I think if we table it, obviously there's going to be discussion about that information, so we probably should reopen it.
Yeah, I think David, don't you have something that you'd like to say to the board?
I just think that, that's totally fine, that's exactly what I think. Yeah, we should, should, we already received the new materials, right, Rick?
No, you haven't.
Yeah, we should receive and file the new materials, so.
Right, we did, we received and filed them tonight, but you have not.
Yeah, we haven't seen it. The town has received, yes.
The town has received, but they, the board has basically received and filed tonight. You don't have them, I'm going to send those out to you, because they came in last week and I wasn't going to pile them on their own.
Fine, just table it, and yeah, I agree with what you're doing.
Are you okay with that, Andrea?
Yeah, but is that why no one from the Donellys, no one from the town spoke at tonight's meeting? Because we knew, they knew we were going to table it anyway?
David, this is what you need to explain to the board?
Well, that, yeah, that's part of it, we did know that, well, we assumed that, I, when we had all that new stuff, and the new stuff is really relevant, I mean, they, they talked about it tonight. And then there is also another application that is a similar application that's on for next month, right, we assume, Rick?
Yeah, well, he stated, he stated they were going to submit them.
Yeah, so there's some judicial economy of kind of hearing these things together and doing it all at once.
But isn't there also something that you want to say about regarding when we expect the material coming in from the town and that?
Well, yeah, well, they have to prepare, at some point, they have to put in their, their opinions about Ramsey's behavior.
And when, and when should the board accept this?
I'm not sure where you're going, when should they accept what?
The material from the town.
Expect it, not accept it, expect it, is what I think.
Well, sometime before the cutoff, I believe, or thereabouts, to give us time for the next meeting.
Okay.
It's going to be two weeks before the next meeting, right, Rick? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, I think what we need to do is, is in our motion to table, basically.
Specifically allow when we expect to hear from the town, yeah.
Address the application, and that we would accept it by September 23rd.
Okay, that's fine.
But I need somebody to make that motion.
Okay, well, this is Andrea's to do.
Can you repeat that? So we're tabling it to receive and file the new materials that were just submitted by the applicant tonight?
Right.
And then, and then we expect a response from the town?
And allow the town to respond accordingly.
Honor before the 23rd.
Yeah, honor before the 23rd of September.
Now, that's good. Yeah, because we got to put some performance to this if we're tableing it, right?
Okay, so I move to table application 9A-04-20 and specifically leave the public meeting open in order to receive and file the new materials submitted by the applicant and to allow the town to respond accordingly on or before September 23rd, 2020.
Okay, good, how about a second?
I can second it.
Thank you.
The motion is to table and leave the public hearing open, Ms. Schwartz?
Yes.
Ms. Schmidt? Mr. Mites?
Yes.
Ms. Dale?
Yes.
Ms. Tompkins, right?
Yes.
Motion to table and keep the public hearing open is approved.
Okay, all right, so the next one is on Fairhaven, this is the swimming pool that's got to be a little bit behind the house. Is there anybody that has any concerns about this?
It is going to look weird, particularly because the house and that side yard is separated by a driveway, and it's a double lot, so it almost looks like it's a whole housing lot on its own with a fence and a pool in it.
Right, well, I think, you know, again, he offered, you know, when the question was there, I think without some kind of landscaping mitigation, I think it would look probably a lot worse. So there's probably a way to kind of dress it up a little bit. But it, you know, the location is the location, and I think if he shoves it up the other way, I'm not sure it's going to look much better, to be honest with you.
I do think they'll landscape, I, I, you know, I mean, we'll put the condition, but I think they really will.
Yeah, I think the guy's trying to cooperate, I didn't get the sense that he's going to.
The backyard is as big as a postage stamp, there's no way they could put, you know, a pool back there.
Okay, all right.
Just for, you know, clarification, it is a subdivided lot, so there was, right, two lots and actually one lot now, so.
Yeah, uh-huh.
It is on the house proper lot.
Right. Okay. All right, so is there anyone that objects to it? I'm not sure that was an objection, Andrea, or what it was.
It's just a comment about how interesting it's going, I mean, normally I would anticipate this on like a corner lot. You know, we've approved, I'm assuming, side lots for those purposes.
Right, well, I think, you know, as was stated here too, the other, the, trying to get it into the other section of the lot is really not, I mean, it would be like a bowling alley type swimming pool or something. All right, Kathy, are you good with this?
I agree with people that it looks, it will, I think it will look bad, but I don't think that's sufficient reason to deny it.
You what?
I think that it will not look aesthetically good, but I don't think that's sufficient reason.
Okay, so it's your motion, are you willing to make a motion to approve this?
Yeah.
Okay, please do then.
Sneak up as loud as you can, too.
All right, I'll try, I'll be.
Thanks.
I move to approve application 9A-03-20 based on the following findings of fact. One, the variance requested to build an in-ground pool on the homeowner's side yard rather than the backyard as required by the code. There is insufficient room in the backyard to accommodate an in-ground pool due to a garage and driveway that are behind the house as well as a fire pit and a large tree. Three, the property appears to be a double lot with the proposed pool being placed on what is now green space. Four, the granting of this variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or be a detriment to nearby properties as the pool will not extend beyond the front of their home and it will not be visible due to privacy testing that the homeowner will be stalling as well as landscaping. There is no evidence that there would be a negative impact on the health, safety, and welfare of the neighborhood. Indeed, the neighbors who is most affected by this addition is in support of the project. Conditions. One, the variance applies only to the placement of the in-ground pool as described in the application and testimony provided and will not apply to future projects. A privacy fence as opposed to an open style fence must be installed.
Kathy, this is number two, correct?
Number two, yes, I'm sorry. Number two, a privacy fence as opposed to an open style fence must be installed so the pool is not visible from the street. Similar landscaping must be put into place to further mitigate the impact on the neighborhood. Three, all necessary building permits shall be obtained.
Second, Judy.
Motion is to approve with conditions. Ms. Tompkins, right?
Yes.
Ms. Dale?
Yes.
Mr. Mites?
Yes.
Ms. Schwartz?
Yes.
Ms. Schmidt? Motion to approve with conditions, Garry's.
Okay, so the next one is the addition on Norman Road that goes a couple feet into the side setback. Concerns about this?
No.
Yeah, it sounds like the ARB has got them a little bit on the hook here to get this resolved so that architecturally it looks right. So I think we could certainly count on them to do that. Okay.
Okay, this one was mine.
Okay.
Okay, motion to approve application 9A0620, blah, 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 based on the following findings of fact. Number one, the request variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or be a detriment to nearby properties. Number two, the applicant is seeking to add two bedrooms to support their growing family, and the granting of the two-foot variance will allow the bedrooms to be 12 feet wide, which is in line with the rest of the size and flow of the home and is the minimum size possible to achieve the functionality desired by the applicants. Number three, the location of the addition is the only feasible option due to the location of the septic system at the rear of the house. Number, what am I on? Four, the proposed variance will not have an adverse impact on the physical or environmental conditions of the neighborhood. Conditions, the exterior of the addition will match the existing home.
Can we just leave it that up to the architectural review board?
Oh, sure, okay, architectural, okay, yeah, yeah, that's fine, that's smart. Architectural review board approval must be received. And do you want to say that the total garage space will not exceed 900 square feet, or is that not?
I think, I think I basically put them on notice, and then that would be reviewed as part of the building permit process and even as plans move forward, I don't think we need it. But I do think you want to make the standard condition, Jean, about, and only applies to the addition.
Okay, the addition shall be constructed as per the location and dimensions as specified in the application.
Okay.
Thank you.
You have a second?
Second, Judy.
Okay.
Motion is to approve with conditions, Ms. Schmidt? Mr. Mites?
Yes.
Ms. Tompkins, right? Ms. Schwartz?
Yes.
Ms. Dale?
Yes.
Motion to approve with conditions, Garry's.
Right, and the garage isn't going to be that bad, because it's really going to look like a double.
Yeah, I mean, it's not going to stick out like a huge.
No.
No, because it's going to go out the back, it's a tampon.
I don't think they're going to come close to the 900 square feet.
No, okay, all right, let's move on. So the next one is 118 Commodore, and that's the little error by the contractor related to the construction and squaring up the driveway. Does anybody have any concerns about it?
No.
Okay, all right, I've got that. I move we approve application 9A07 based on the following findings of fact. One, numerous properties in the subject neighborhood have similar driveway configurations, and thus no negative effect on the character of the neighborhood will likely result from this variance. Two, the front yard, a coverage ratio of 32.6% versus the 30% required is not substantial and will not be noticeable. and will not be noticeable in the proposed driveway configuration. Three, no other alternative can achieve the desired result of properly stacking cars in the driveway and kept off the street. Conditions, this variance is based on testimony given and drawing submitted and specifically to the location of the addition to the driveway. And two, I guess, do they need any permits for this?
Yeah, I would just say unnecessary highway permit shall be.
Okay. All right. That should do it.
You have a second?
Judy, second.
Motion is to approve with conditions. Ms. Tompkins, right?
Yes.
Ms. Dale?
Yes.
Ms. Schmidt?
Yeah.
Ms. Schwartz?
Yes.
Mr. Mites?
Yes.
Motion to approve with conditions carries.
Then we move over to Metro Park with the parking lot expansion of, and the coverage ratio issue. Concerns over here?
No.
I don't have any.
Okay. I don't either. Okay, Judy, why don't you go ahead with nine A oh eight?
Okay, I move that we approve application nine A oh eight dash twenty based on the following findings of fact. One, though the requested variance is substantial, almost a total reduction of the setback point two feet from the lot line and moving them ten feet required by code, there will be no adverse effect on the area as the site is in a light industrial slash office building area and the adjoining parcel has a similar existing condition. Two, this variance will result in meeting the minimum drive aisle width for the entire length of the two-way drive beginning at the entrance on the western side of the parcel. Oh, I should have made that three. But, all right. Three, this present plan was reconfigured from the preliminary site plan and has resulted in the removal of 127 linear feet of drive aisle and reduction and reduces the impervious coverage on the site. This is beneficial to the environment and storm water management. Four.
Judy, I don't, that, that condition is basically, you're saying that, you're making a finding that it's not as bad as they originally, it's not as bad as they originally proposed and it, but it still needs variances. So I don't know if I would, that, that finding that was found, I would just delete that.
All right. All right. So you don't want to take that they took out 100?
No, because they didn't take out 100 and some odd feet from the, what's there. They just took it out of a plan that they showed, I don't know, to somebody.
Oh, so we'll retake that out. So my number three is no other alternative can alleviate the difficulty and produce desired result. Conditions, this variance only applies to the reduced setback as described in the written application and testimony presented. And two, all planning and building approvals must be obtained.
We have a second?
Second.
Andrea?
Motion is to approve with conditions. Ms. Schmidt?
Yeah.
Ms. Dale? Ms. Dale?
Oh, sorry, yes.
Mr. Mites?
Yes.
Ms. Tompkins, right?
Yes.
Ms. Schwartz?
Yes.
Motion to approve with conditions carries.
Okay, then we got the other half of it related to the coverage ratio. So no issues there. Andrea?
I move to approve application nine A dash oh nine dash twenty all as described in the application and plans on file based on the following findings of fact. Number one, the granting of the requested variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or be a detriment to nearby properties. The additional impervious coverage will in fact be consistent with the surrounding properties as the property's location is along a light industrial corridor and many of the surrounding properties are largely developed with the majority of the land covered in buildings and impervious surface. Number two, the requested variance is not substantial as it is only 4% more total impervious cover than permitted by code. Number three, the benefit sought by the applicant cannot reasonably be achieved by any other method while meeting applicant's requirements due to the size and scope of the addition being constructed on the property and the necessary ingress, egress, and circulation for emergency vehicles and required parking. Number four, there is no evidence that the proposed variance will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district. Number one, I'm sorry, conditions. Number one, the variance granted herein applies only to the increase in impervious lot coverage to 69% in the location as depicted on the application and then. That's all I have.
Andrea, what was your last, you, you?
Sorry. I'll get weirdly close to the computer. The conditions, the variance granted herein applies only to the increase in impervious lot coverage to 69% in the location as depicted on the application and in the testimony given. And then I only have that one condition. I don't think you need any permits for.
Oh, it just go number two is all necessary planning board approval shall be obtained.
Do they need planning board approvals for just impervious cover?
Yeah, it's all part of the site plan approval.
Number two, all planning board approvals must be obtained.
Second, Judy.
Okay.
Motion is to approve with conditions. Mr. Mites?
Yes.
Ms. Dale?
She's muted.
Yes.
Ms. Schmidt?
Yeah.
Ms. Schwartz?
Yes.
Ms. Tompkins, right?
Oh, you're muted on.
Yes, yes.
Motion to approve with conditions carries.
Okay, so the next one is Ambassador Drive. You know, obviously these people purchased the property and they're trying to create this garage. Certainly, certainly a lot of structures like that in this neighborhoods. All right. So what are thoughts here? Any objection?
I think it will look very nice.
Yeah, I think so, too. Yeah. The other thing, too, is that the way that grade is in the back, it's not gonna look 24 feet high.
Not at all.
Yeah. Okay. Kathleen, are you okay with this?
Yeah.
Okay, why don't you go ahead?
I move to approve application nine A dash ten dash twenty based on the following findings of fact. One, the first variance requested to build a detached garage of 844 square feet where the code allows 600 square feet. Two, this second variance seeks to have a finished height on the garage of 24 feet above grade where the code allows 16 feet above grade. Three, the new garage will replace an existing one-car attached garage that is original to this 1928 house and does not need the parking and storage requirements of the new homeowners. Four, the granting of this variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or be a detriment to nearby properties. The garage is set back more than 135 feet from the street. The addition will likely not be noticeable to any passersby. Moreover, the proposed height is consistent with the aesthetics of the existing home within the high street line. Five, the requested height variance is not substantial given that there is a significant drop in grade which the homeowner estimates to be five feet from the road. Six, there is no evidence that there would be a negative impact on the health, safety, and welfare of the neighborhood. Conditions, the variance applies only to the garage addition described in the application and testimony provided and will not apply to future projects. Two, all necessary building permits shall be obtained.
Do we want to make comments about use of the upstairs utilities, anything like that? Anybody?
Well, I think the, the evidence that there was only gonna be electric in the building, so I think we could certainly state that.
Yeah.
So let's make that a condition. Does somebody want to make that a condition?
Yeah, I think.
Sure. This is number three. Just trying to think of how to normally phrase it.
The only utilities to the structure shall be electric?
Perfectly fine.
Now, do you want to say anything about second floor use?
You mean just for storage, something like that?
Something like that.
Yeah. Because, see, they've, the people living there now will be fighting with storage, but who's to say what might happen, you know, 15, 20 years down?
Exactly.
Yeah.
As a condition regarding the use of the second floor on this.
So I would, I don't know, I don't want to put words in your mouth, Kathleen, but I think another condition would be that this area above will be, the upper level will only be used for storage.
Well, if that's exactly what I just wrote down, that's perfect.
And not habitable space or something. I don't know.
Only be used for storage is fine.
Yeah.
Okay, can we get a second for this, please?
Second, again. Oh, all right.
Sorry.
Okay.
Go ahead.
All right.
I'm sorry. Judy had the second?
Well, all right. Okay.
Judy has the second.
Yes.
Motion is to approve with conditions. Ms. Tompkins, right?
Yes.
Ms. Dale?
Yes.
Mr. Mites?
Yes.
Ms. Schwartz?
Yes.
Ms. Schmidt?
Yeah.
Motion to approve with conditions carries.
Okay, so we're at the bitter end here. Summit Drive. It's quite an exhaustive presentation, I would say. And, you know, I think the concerns about the drainage and stuff are valid. I'm not sure he's got that really figured out or not, but. Okay, so anyway, let's, let's talk about this. And Kathleen, what do you think about this?
Kathleen? Oh, okay. I didn't know if I'd lost you or not.
Yeah, you know, actually, I was okay with this one.
Okay.
What did she say?
He was okay with it.
Okay.
All right, Andrea?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think that this is a really complicated property and I trust, I think, I'm okay with the side. It does seem close, being only 15 away from the neighboring property, but I was happy to hear that the neighbor was okay with it. And I trust the ARB to make, to ensure that the property works well, I guess. I'm not sure how to say that.
Okay. All right, Jeannie?
Yeah.
Are you done, Andrea?
Jeannie, please.
Oh, yeah, I was gonna say, I think it's okay.
Okay. Judy?
No, I, I don't. I mean, it's such a tiny lot. Just adding more, I think, is gonna make it, it, it's, it's, has a lovely, quaint, crowded look now. And I, I think that this, that's kind of like an asset to the property, but I think that adding more is just gonna destroy it. And I have to put a note in here. Our garage is attached to the house. You cannot get into the house from the garage because it was an afterthought. And for 51 years, we've gone around 65 feet, two kids and everything, in all kinds of weather, so it can be done.
Okay. All right. So I guess my feeling is, while I agree with you, Judy, that I think that the way they've offered the mitigation for it is pretty cleverly done and, and, you know, with a minimal amount of construction, really, to be able to achieve something. So I would be supportive of it.
Whose motion is this?
Okay. Um, motion to approve nine A 1120 based on the following findings of fact. Number one, the home was designed and built during a time period that was zoned substantially differently than today. The variance as requested is the minimum necessary to allow the homeowners to enter their vehicles when parked in the garage to allow for typical garage storage and entrance to the foyer. Number two, the backyard has a very steep slope that limits its use and so the applicant is seeking outdoor space on the proposed patio. Number three, the existing front entryway has a high pitched roof and dormers that train water onto the front entrance and the proposed change in design will move the water load away and provide for a covered entryway. The applicant testified they will address neighbors' concerns about water runoff to their property with the design of the roof structure by tying into the storm drains or via a drywall system. Number four, the variance, if approved, will not produce an, or the variance, sorry, the variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or be a detriment to nearby properties as the additions as proposed will not encroach beyond the homes on the east and west sides of the house. Number five, the request area variance is not substantial as the front setback will only be reduced by six feet beyond the current front setback and the lot coverage will only be 2% over the allowable, over the non-conforming grandfathered allowable lot coverage if the patio, if the new patio is covered. Conditions, ARB approval. And number two would be the one about the addition, having to follow the, the application and testimony given. The addition shall be as per the location and size as depicted in the application and per testimony given.
Do you want to say anything about this drainage issue along that patio side?
Uh.
You said, you said in the findings related to the.
Oh, sure. So a, a third condition would be the applicant will address neighbor, neighbors' concerns about water runoff to adjacent properties.
From the patio area?
I would say from the new addition.
Okay, that's fine. Got a second on this one?
Andrea, seconds.
Okay, thanks.
Motion is to approve with conditions. Ms. Schmidt? Ms. Schwartz?
No.
Mr. Mites?
Yes.
Ms. Tompkins, right? Ms. Dale?
Yes.
Motion to approve with conditions carries.
Okay, we made it by 10:29. How about that, Matt?
It's a record.
Yeah, you guys, I, I do expect us to have pretty heavy next month.
Good.
So please be prepared and Kathy, I hope you can figure out your technical difficulties because we really, we're a member, so we only have six people and I'm hoping everybody will be here in October. Am I right with that? I hope everybody will be.
Yes, 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 yes.
Yep.
So we do need everybody. And again, I think it's gonna be some stuff that we're gonna really have to concentrate hard on. So let's bring our A game next month.
Yeah, the other thing is, you know, you're gonna have these two applications related to this Whole Foods thing and, you know, it's a pretty volatile thing as all of us know. So what, whatever materials we get forwarded, please make sure you take the time to really read them through. If there's questions about it, let's do it before, because it may, this, you know, this is not an easy format. I think we do pretty well with it.
I think we do.
But, but I think, you know, we, we gotta, you know, like Rick says, there's, there's some pretty important things coming up. So just do your homework, I guess, is about all I say.
Yeah, I do want, I do want to say to you guys, too, with, with the Whole Foods situation, we, you might not get the town's response when you get the packet. But be aware that that will be following up fairly shortly after you get your packet of material. So keep an eye out for it.
All right, well.
What did you say we won't get with the packet?
The town's response.
Oh, the town response, okay.
Yeah, because he's not gonna hold the whole packet waiting for it, so let's.
Right. And we've given them to the 24. Right, and we've given them to the 23rd to get that into us. You might have it all together, I'm not sure, I'm not sure how everything will come in, but just, um, be aware.
Okay, sounds good. And thank you, everybody, and, you know, I think it's great, and let's hope that we don't have to do this forever, but, you know, I guess we'll do the best we can.
It's not bad.
Okay, alright.
Alright, everybody.
Okay, good night.
Bye.
Thanks, everybody. Bye.
Bye.